Good evening, welcome to the Goffstown Board of Selectmen's meeting, April nineteenth, twenty ten. This evening Chairman Gross will be a bit late, he's currently in Boston running the marathon. Trying to get up here for the meeting. First order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance, please rise.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next order is the acceptance of the correction of the minutes of April twelfth.
Permission to delay this until Chairman Gross arrives?
Well, with the rate that he's running, we may not get to it tonight. It's up to the board, I mean, it's just the corrections, if he has any corrections, we can always add them to it. If you want to hold off.
So much of this was his words. Two thirds of it.
Well, perhaps it's better that we approve him. Whatever the board desires, you want to table him, we'll table him. Or a motion to approve.
I believe it's best just to hold off till later in the session.
Okay, that's fine, we'll do that then. Next item is announcements. We have one announcement, I believe, which is from Jim Gamache. Was recruiting assistant for U.S. Census Bureau, and it's come to the end of the ten-week duration period, and he would like to thank our secretary Catherine Fisher for the time she
Thank you.
That you afforded him the use of the facility to administer the twenty-ten census tests. He also wanted to thank the staff for their friendly assistance and appreciate the fact that you always took his calls and worked with him to set up the test schedule dates. And that's thankfully of Jim Gamache. And do we have any other announcements? Seeing none, next order of business, the public comment. Brian, are you here as a member of the public?
I'm always a member of the public, but I don't have any comment.
Okay, seeing that, we'll move on. We have a six-thirty appointment, we're running a few minutes early. We can move into the Town Administrator's report.
Thank you. Your weekly meeting schedule is in your packets, the Sewer Commission has changed their meeting time tomorrow from six-thirty to four-thirty.
I will be there.
Okay, and Budget Committee is at seven tomorrow evening, and that will be in this side, and Sewer Commission's on the other side. Wednesday night, you have Library Trustees at six-thirty, and Parks and Rec at seven. Thursday night, seven o'clock is Planning Board in this room. And also Thursday at eight a.m. is the first meeting of a H.R. committee. Kenson?
All the members are aware of this?
Yes, email went out today.
I don't know if I should wait till you're down, or do we want to drop in on segments? But I will not, I'll be out of state on business on Wednesday for the Parks and Recreation, I already spoke to Rick, so if they are, they will be swearing in two members, so either if I can get someone from the board to go, or possibly it could be Kathy, but I spoke with Rick yesterday.
Is a member of the board available on Wednesday night to swear in the two members of Parks and Rec? Okay, so Selectman Cap Sina will do that.
Thank you. I just, I just got the message on Thursday that I'd be out of state.
Did you?
They'll have the paperwork?
Yes.
Yeah, it should be there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And tonight's consensus folder includes A.P. warrants, employee status reports. There's an additional one that's not in your packet for labor at D.B.W. Raffle permit for Junior, Goffstown Junior Baseball, the annual stormwater report to EPA, and also the paperwork for the reappointment of Mildred Wheeler Pratt to H.D.C., is it your signature vote?
And the Commission did vote to recommend her reappointment. Motion to approve? I'll make that motion.
Seconded.
Any discussion?
Just question, on the labor position, was this, did we discuss this before? I thought we, I thought there was a freeze on hiring until, unless the board approved positions.
I didn't think that we had one on that because I thought that we had reached the consensus that these things would affect this department in a negative way.
I thought all openings were going to come to the board before we gave approval to post a position as being open.
Why don't we wait till Carl gets here on that one in non-public? Because I'm not sure if this is a seasonal one, that, you know, you approved it being hired as seasonal, and now the seasonal part is over, and now it becomes a full-time regular? I don't know if this is the same person.
All right.
While we discuss it in non-public.
I'll amend a motion to, for it to be without this one. Agreed. Any more, any further discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you, the assessment recommendations include recommendations on elderly exemptions to recommend MAP six lot seventeen B dash forty, MAP eighteen lot fifty-eight B dash one seven, and to deny MAP thirteen lot seven A. Veterans tax credits for MAP six lot twenty-two dash ninety, and MAP eight lot sixty dash four, and a blind exemption on MAP seventeen lot forty-seven.
We need a motion?
We will.
Second?
Yes.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Enclosed in your packet is a draft insert for the first property tax bill for your review. I had sent it to the chairman. He had added the chart at the bottom. He, there was also a question, and you may want to hold off on this till he arrives, but he was wondering how much explanation we should do regarding the reasons for the increase.
Well, I, I think that we should hold off on it.
Okay.
I did have a couple other concerns on that. So we'll hold off on that.
And the survey, the board wants to initiate a community survey and start with a survey related to board's performance. The chairman had asked everyone to, I had emailed you all the ICMA community survey, and the chairman had asked everyone to submit questions to me by the end of the week. I received one from the chairman, which is at Tab five E in your packets. This is another one, you may want to wait till he arrives to discuss this.
We will.
I didn't, you didn't get a comment from me, because I thought, though we were making it more generalized, this was probably a lot more general than I thought we were going, so I just left it at that, because I was looking at it.
And that was my, I was puzzled with this too, because even Chairman Gross's comment relates to this, which is really not a survey on the board.
On board, right.
And I guess, I concur, because I was looking for something in there that had some type of a reference to the board's before.
Some of the, right, the duties of the board.
Oh, I think there's one way at the end of, if I remember correctly, but it wasn't what I expected, so I didn't make a comment to it.
I, I thought that was going to be the focus.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so save that till he gets here too?
Yep.
State budget, if the governor's revised budget prevails, then the town of Goffstown will lose about seventy-nine thousand in room and meals tax, and incur an additional five percent of the employer's share to New Hampshire Retirement System for police and fire. If the New Hampshire Retirement System contribution takes effect on July first, then it equates to an additional eighteen thousand three hundred dollars over what is currently budgeted for the town. This means that you can expect the fire department and the police department's retirement budget lines to be over expended, fire by seven thousand four oh four, and police by ten thousand eight ninety-seven. The two thousand ten budget shortfall due to the room and meals and the New Hampshire Retirement System shift would total ninety-seven thousand three hundred and eighty-six dollars.
In actuality, though, we have to add what we're already minus, what we lost in two thousand and nine, because we're not making that back up, so reality, we're minus that.
Right, but I'm comparing this to our current two thousand and ten budget, and we already budgeted for those other losses.
Oh, no, I understand, and we here understand that, but if we're going to keep a running total of our losses in revenue, we have to start from the point of beginning.
Then you'd have to add shared revenues too, because we lost that last year.
That's what I'm saying, because those aren't coming back, those are still gone. So in reality, we've lost that because we don't have it, and we've always had it.
Mm-hmm, but we did not budget for shared revenues this year. But we did budget for a hundred percent of room and meals, so this, this is the loss against what we budgeted for this year.
Right, but the reality is that you didn't budget for it, but we usually do, so it's still a loss of revenue. Okay.
When finance researched the hundred and fifty thousand received earlier this year from the two thousand and six Mother's Day flood, it came in as a FEMA check, when they reviewed it, it was federal highway money that was finally arriving for us, and it was already booked as a receivable in two thousand and eight, because we had received a notice of award, so that's not any extra money for this year, that will take the receivable off the books.
It will come out another year. Thank you. Question?
No, just a lot of good news today.
Oh.
Just a comment, I had suggested earlier that the Town Administrator talk with our Finance Director and look at giving us a synopsis of anything else from prior years that may be hanging out there as receivables that may have been booked prior years, but we still have not received the funds.
That's all I have for public session.
That's it?
Mm-hmm. We can talk about the MAC meeting related to the state budget, if you wanted to do that.
We can, if you want to.
Five F is something that was handed out, and that gives you kind of a synopsis statewide of the impact of the changes in the government's budget.
You want to explain how he's included the state school aid? And how it skewed, actually has skewed the numbers?
Yes, the governor looks at it as an aggregate, and he's putting the school and the town together again and saying, yeah, but we increased school aid, therefore the net effect on the town is an increase and not a decrease.
Right.
And he continues to do that this year by the redistribution, by taking away from the town side. So you'll, if this continues, you'll see the town side of the tax rate go up because of the shifting.
Right, but I, I think what he's doing is, he's combining aid to cities and towns, this aid along with this constitutional requirement, statutory requirement, that the state provides money for the schools. So he's mixing apple, those two together. And when you back that out over the years, our number actually has gone down. What he's doing, by combining the two of them together, it looks like, and going by the bottom line, it's showing that the bottom line has increased. Bottom line is increasing as a number, but when you back out the state, what's required for the state to pay school districts, the actual number has been reduced.
And most of the discussion at the LGC MAC meeting was about the fact that when they say, don't, when we say, hey, don't take our room and meals tax, and don't take our shared revenues, they say, where else do you want us to get the money we need? And so the committee was exploring other areas, and one suggestion was the Regi funds. The Regi funds have about, what was it, ten million uncommitted this year? And they encourage that, and then long-term, there's even, Regi is a regional energy, greenhouse gas, it, it's for environmental reasons and to save.
It's what's used for retrofitting buildings.
Right, so that was one suggestion, didn't go over very big with most of the members there, because many of the communities have received Regi funds. Regi funds are not totally earmarked though for municipalities. They can go to private sector as well as other governmental entities. So they're, they're looking for ideas, if the board has any idea where the governor can, or the state can get their money, rather than downshifting to municipalities, you know, LGC would like to know. What was another idea that they had discussed besides Regi funds? Oh, the other one was to increase the state education tax. By thirty cents, which will result in fifty million, because currently fifty million is coming out of the state general fund to fund adequacy. That didn't get a warm reception either, especially by donor towns.
With that being said, for us to have a clearer picture, I, I agree totally with Nick that it would be nice to see whatever monies, whatever monies are in the, I don't want to call them in the rears, but grants or payments that we'd be looking, revenues we look for there in the past. But when we take these numbers here, can we translate it into a clearer picture than what I'm looking here from a percentage? We're just, I'm looking at a percentage here, correct?
Five F? Those are dollar amounts?
Yeah, I know, but, but I'm saying, but I'm looking at, for us, we'd be applying, I'm looking at nine percent, and then fourteen percent, correct? This has decreased from oh eight, oh nine to ten eleven, is it a nine percent, correct?
We're seeing
Does that nine percent reflect directly to us, is what I'm asking?
What nine percent?
Like on page two, at the top.
Oh, page two, I was
If, if the total sum is distributed to the towns and cities in the same ratio.
Right.
See, that's, if it is.
And room and meals, I would say, there, there's a complicated formula that the state does not default to us.
So do we have an idea what the, in other words, I'm seeing that percentage, do we have an idea what our dollar figure would be?
Well, room and meals is ten percent. It's a reduction of ten percent.
I apologize, maybe I'm not explaining it correctly for what I'm looking for. When I look at the, when, if we were to look at our budget, and we, then we would look at our revenue section, we're saying there's going to be an adjustment of what we calculated for, and then what the changes, can we see that in?
Ninety-seven three eighty-six.
Right, plus the retirement, the numbers for the retirement.
Yeah, that includes retirement and room and meals in my report.
That's on this, right, two.
Maybe I missed page two. Were you on five?
My report. That's the dollars. Are you wanting to know what that equates to in percentage, is that what you're asking?
No, I think, I think what you have there is probably what I missed, and I'm, I'll catch up.
Okay.
Sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, what my, what my point was, when I mentioned earlier about adding, by adding the adequate, state aid adequacy grant to it, I'll excuse the numbers, if you look at these four fiscal year two thousand and nine, if you back out the school districts, if you exclude the adequacy grants, okay, we have two thousand and nine was two hundred and seventy-one thou, two, two seventy-one million versus two fifty-one in twenty-ten. Backing out the adequacy grant, and in twenty-eleven, it's two forty-five, so it's actually going down every year. But when you include the adequacy grants, because, not grants, rather the adequacy, well, yeah, grants and funding, it, that skews it and makes the bottom line look bigger.
Better.
Right, to towns, okay.
And there's, there's very few municipalities in the state where it's all reflected in one political subdivision, local and education, that's usually cities.
Right, like Manchester, Concord, and Nashville.
That's it, so if, and the other thing is that we're going to be breaking up into our subcommittees. MAC, I'm on Municipal Administration of Finance, and Selectman DeVanzo is on, which one are you on?
Environmental Poli, Planning and Environmental Policy.
And so we will be looking at proposals for changes in the state laws, and making recommendations, and voting on policies, well, at the annual meeting, you'll actually be the delegate from the board to vote on this.
Right. One of the things that I did bring up afterwards to Cordell was the issue that you have, you'd only catch this if you're the Selectman's rep to the Planning Board. You'd catch it, because we get all the notices here about mosquito-borne illnesses, how to standing bodies of water create, create them. Don't let bodies of water stand, do whatever you can to eliminate standing bodies of water. And what's been coming down the pike from DES to the planning are rain gardens. In other words, instead of trying to get your water to go off traditionally, how it's gone into, let's say, one large pond, to take it and put it into little ponds all over the property, so you wind up with rain gardens that might last anywhere from, who knows, three days, ten days, or whatever, and that's an excellent breeding place for mosquitoes. So on one hand, we're being told to do all of this stuff, the state does not provide funding for spraying for mosquitoes, we're getting, there have been a few deaths in New Hampshire from the encephalitis and different mosquito-borne illnesses. All the concerns about birds that are dying, and if you find dead birds, don't go over all of this, we're dealing with it from the administrative level. We've had our emergency management work with Manchester as far as inoculations, in case we have to do some type of mass inoculation for something. And on the other hand, this is all being promoted, and we have one, happen to have one in front of us right now, and the big question is, there's really no way to know about the soils that are underneath it to make sure that they're going to drain, because there is no, there's no, there's no history of this, and so even, even in our engineers, really aren't sure. So when they're looking at it, I mean, they can't look at this and say, okay, this is going to be standing water for two days, or four days, or a week, or ten days, so I just said it's kind of like a little bit of an oxymoron, and you wouldn't catch it unless you're on both, you have, you're catching both issues. Because Southern Hampshire plant, planning came last year, and they gave us a big presentation about the impervious drainage, water gardens, now they're talking about some of these that are actually having pipes and tanks underneath driveways where the water is going, and if these are exposed to the air, that's a place for mosquitoes to get in, and they'd be underneath your driveway, and you never know how much water is in these containment areas.
Get filled with muck and back up.
All kinds of things, bacteria, all the types of airborne illnesses that you'd have to deal with administratively.
Solution is not to have any such holding basins, and just let all the water go downhill?
Well, I guess that's why I brought up to Cordell, and asked Cordell if he could take a look at that and see if that's something that we need to address.
Let's try to make the Piscataqua higher.
Cordell is one of the staff attorneys at LGC.
We have any others discussion on this? If not, we'll move on to, well, we're running five minutes ahead of schedule.
Our president, the Garden Club, is here, though.
Are you expecting anybody else?
No, just me.
Well, we're running a few minutes early, if you'd like to.
Absolutely.
I didn't know if you want to just sit down and enjoy yourself. Aw, shucks, we have so much difficulty getting people to come down and share time with us. There's nobody else coming?
No, my husband's going to take a picture.
Oh, you'll set up with the camera?
Got a camera.
Okay, we'll do that.
Okay.
You're on TV, Jackie.
Something with a pleasing background. Not in this room.
I don't want my back, where do you want me to stand?
We have cameras all around, so if you stand next to Selectman DeVanzo, then?
Right, the only, one thing I want to do, though.
Okay.
One second, because it's not in here. One second. That's it. Okay, this evening we have Jacqueline Woodvitch.
I'm pregnant. Is that it, yeah, exactly.
We're being like the Vanza. All right, go for it. I'm sorry, I apologize. Wanted to present you with the proclamation for the Garden Club.
Thank you.
And what I just wanted to do was, I just wanted to read that for our audience, it's a proclamation from the town of Goffstown. Whereas the Goffstown Community Garden Club is sponsoring a campaign to keep Goffstown beautiful during the week of April eighteenth through April twenty-fourth, two thousand and ten. And whereas the Goffstown Community Garden Club is encouraging businesses, organizations, and homeowners to pick up, clean up, and spruce up streets, lawns, parks, corners, roadways, et cetera, as well as around private homes throughout the community. And now therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen, Town of Goffstown, County of Hillsborough, State of New Hampshire, by virtue of the authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim that April eighteenth through April twenty-fourth, two thousand and ten be designated as Keep Goffstown Beautiful Week. Throughout the town of Goffstown, New Hampshire, and urge all of the citizenry of the town of Goffstown to participate in the efforts to pick up, clean up, and spruce up all the areas of the community throughout that period. We also urge all townspeople to recycle their newspapers, magazines, mixed paper, plastic, aluminum, and steel tin cans, bottles, and corrugated cardboard by utilizing Goffstown's curbside recycling program or visiting the Goffstown Transfer Station located at four oh four Helm Street. Given on our hands and seal this nineteenth day of April in the year of our Lord, two thousand and ten. Goffstown Board of Selectmen, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Sure you will, you did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, when is your plant sale?
May.
In May?
Yeah, middle of May.
Oh, okay, this is a good time to plant.
Is it usually like the second Saturday?
Yeah, around there, yeah.
And it's going to be in the comment again?
It's going to be in the comment.
Jacqueline, good luck.
Thank you.
Jacqueline, your organization takes care of the intersection of Wallace and Mass?
Yeah.
I guess you know not to be too prompt in getting that beautified this season.
Why's that?
There's going to be a roundabout there?
You want, how can I build a roundabout, because we live on Wallace Road.
Yes.
Great, good, when's that going to start, do you know?
Soon, last week.
I'll let them know, I don't, no one said anything about this. Yeah.
I knew it was someplace, I just
Stay in touch with Carl, stay in touch with Carl.
With who?
Carl, Director of D.B.W.
Oh, Carl?
Yes, Querem.
Oh, Querem, definitely will, I'll give you a call, thank you, appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jackie.
Okay. Well, I guess we're in the same predicament, we'll either discuss something that
You want to go to old business?
Well.
Why would we?
Actually, why don't we just go right through, new, I mean, is there any new business that we have? Any old business, there you go.
Old business, did we find out regarding Glen Lake, and as far as what public is?
We've gone through the whole folder that we had on it, and it doesn't define public. And it, and the D just says public, it doesn't define any particular uses, just that, you know, if it's not used for the public, it reverts back to the New Hampshire Water Resources Board. But even in the application for the federal funding, we didn't see any requirement for swimming or anything like that.
Okay, because the question, I guess that's still coming up as far as what public is, but we do have a school on that land, it's for Goffstown only.
That's correct.
So that, so public, I mean, I'm taking that, that at that point, that public meant just the town when we were talking, our kindergarten, correct?
Our attorney had looked at the deed and stated a public use, a school is a public use.
Okay, but I take, but I mean, it is public use, but it's public use for residents of Goffstown. I mean, it's not, it's not public for residents outside of Goffstown?
Right, I'm not sure who would we ask, who we would ask.
But you follow, you follow where I'm going with it, and I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's as simple as that, but one would have to say, if that land, and that was all part of that one piece of land, Glen Lake, that was what, sixty acres, I think it was, and they put a school there.
Just one thing I would caution, though, with that, and I, I understand, okay? But I also understand when you say public use of a school. A school could constitute a district that has residents, several towns. And, and we have that in Goffstown, that just happens to have one school that only has students that happen to be from Goffstown.
Which is my point.
Well, I understand, I guess what I am concerned is that if you're taking the definition of public and now trying to eliminate, and just trying to zoom in on one portion of it, I would just be, I just, I'm just cautioning on that.
And just so you know where, where I go with this, as I look at that, I look at it as population, I'm just going to round some numbers, we'll say a population of Goff- We'll say a population of Goffstown, eighteen thousand, we have eighteen parking spaces. And so here we have a lake and parking that's all funded by Goffstown taxpayers for eighteen parking spaces. That's one parking space per thousand. And then we, we actually take this land, and you can actually say it's been utilized for, for a school, which is just for Goffstown residents. So, uh, needless to say, I'm an advocate for making Glen Lake a public beach for Goffstown residents. And that's why I'm looking for the clarification on this, and I don't know when we'll, how, how we'll get a clarification, or when we'll get a clarification. Where do we go from here?
At this point, since the file folder didn't show anything, I would have. And our experience has been when we've called up to the state on issues like this, we haven't gotten a whole lot of direction, cause, um, records are usually destroyed by this time. They keep them for seven years and then they're gone, um.
Cause I, I do have, there is, there is some reading on the deed, and it says, um, it says the grantee by acceptance of the deed can, uh, agrees with the, with the granted that the above described premises will be used for public purposes only and revert, revert back to the state of New Hampshire if used for any other per, purposes.
It's not the deed restriction that I have a problem with, it's if there were any HUD restrictions.
And so, so, and the question would be then, how did we do a school there, I guess, after? So HUD must've said, "we're okay with this," I'd expect, at one point.
When we contacted them, they had no record of it, so.
HUD has no record of us contacting them to put a school there?
They, they had no record of that, um, grant back from.
No, it's after a certain period of time, they, they got rid of it.
They destroy those records after a certain number of years.
So what, so what do we fall back on use?
You can get, um, Attorney Drescher to give you legal interpretation if you want.
That's probably what we would have to do.
You're looking for a, a more uh, expanded definition of public, whether it...
No.
No, you prefer contracted.
You, you would like it to be only residential.
Oh, correct.
He wants to make sure we would not be in any violation of the, uh, grant.
Grant, if it was only residential.
If it was only Goffstown residents.
So, we would keep it as public use, we wouldn't charge for it, it would just be for, for Goffstown residents. We only have eighteen parking spaces, which would make total sense to me.
If you...
Well, one of the concerns that I have is that we have a boat ramp that I believe is owned by, is it owned by Fishing Game? New Hampshire Fishing Game?
Yes.
It's regulated by Fishing Game.
Has a Fishing Game sign.
Okay, I guess then Fishing Game is funded, uh, primar, a lot of its funding comes through sale of, uh, freshwater fishing licenses. And people buy those throughout the state for freshwater fishing licenses, and if people who are from all the other communities in the state, their fund, their fees from their license, fishing licenses are going into this. And we're looking to restrict their use of this boat ramp that they pay for with their fishing license fees. I don't know if that becomes an issue.
I'm not sure either, I guess, but I, I'll, I'll tell you, I'm on the reverse end of that. Where I'm looking at it, that taxpayers in Goffstown have a lake, a beach with eighteen parking spaces. And we're the ones who pay, pay the fees.
My view on that is that if you had eighteen family units in that, uh, lakefront area, uh, it's crowded. So if you had, you know, I don't know where this is going, if you're advocating more parking spaces for more family units, where's the lakefront they're gonna sit on?
I was not advocating for that. What I'm saying is that, is that right now, that, that if, I'm hoping to, if we can determine what public use is, I would like to see that to be a town beach. And because with only eighteen parking spaces, um, and there's eighteen thousand people, one would say that would, that would serve the community much better than how we're serving it at this point in time.
I would...
Well, I could also write a letter to HUD and ask them, tell them that we've got, received that grant in nineteen seventy-seven, and that we would, uh, like to restrict it to Goff, if that's the wish of the board, we'd like to restrict it to Goffstown residents because of its size, and would that be in compliance with their grant requirements?
How do we enforce that?
That would be to be a park, I mean, as, let's say you can, I'm not sure exactly, but let's say we were used to a dump permit sticker. And essentially when a vehicle is parked there.
No, I, I understand it, but I guess, I mean, we, the other night, we looked at the ordinance that was passed, how many years ago, to address the issues?
The first ordinance was nineteen eighty-seven, it was revised in two thousand, I think it was.
And those, and those same issues that were addressed with an ordinance still exist, simply because we can't enforce it. We don't have someone there all the time, so how do we enforce?
I would just say, uh, they would just be, I would expect us to have signs saying this is a public beach. No, we, no, no parking without, without a permit from the town, and once we have that, those permits, which would just be, go to the sou, I mean, go to the transfer station and get a, just a regular dump permit, that would recognize you as a citizen of, of the town, and I would, I would, I would stress that that beach would become a, a public beach for the town and, and their guests, that, that'd go with them.
I, I guess, though, I guess where I might have a little difficulty with that is as a holder of a New Hampshire freshwater fishing license, and I wanna go someplace to fish, and I can't park at a boat where there's a boat ramp from Fishing Game, that my, my money from my licensing that I pay is going to help fund, to maintain, I don't have access to it.
And I, and, and I, I understand what you're saying, and I also sit from, looking at it from being a resident within Goffstown, saying I'm paying taxes for the cleanup, cleanup and maintenance, and the parking, and the monitoring of this, and may, and it doesn't sound like we can serve both, and if I'm going to lean someplace, I'm going to lean towards the taxpayers and the citizens of Goffstown.
Okay, and I wanna use this Sunday morning, uh, seven o'clock to ten o'clock in the morning, and I can't use it. And there's nobody there, there, there was no, there are all these empty spaces that are there, and I can't park, cause I'm non-resident.
Yeah, that's just the way it is with the public, with a town beach. I mean, and the other part with that also is that when you go to other communities where they have town beaches, I mean, excuse me, public launches or boat launches, they monitor it for mill foil. Uh, okay, with that being said, that's one of the problems that we do run into, we don't monitor them, we don't utilize them in that manner. And, and so there's lots of, there's lots of other complications that go with it. So if you're gonna have a, a launch area, we have no one who monitors it for mill foil on the, on the trailers or on the boats, and they go in there. And usually when people fish, they go from one place to the other. I can tell you Namasque Lake was filled with mill foil, and people would come, and I would watch them fish every Saturday morning. And usually what happens, they would fish there for a period, leave, I can tell you they're going to another lake. And then with it, they're bringing the mill foil, unless of course someone monitors it. So there's, there's more than one reason for this. It, 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 it's, um, one, it provides more ac, better access for the people who pay taxes in town. Two, from, from a boat launch pe, uh, piece where mill foil is such an invasive species that we can, that, uh, usually people who are living in the areas under, you know, their boat is coming in and out of that same, that same lake. Just some, some thoughts to put out there.
Any other discussion?
But in the end, we end up holding the bill, when it comes to mill foil, and we end up holding the bill when it comes to being, cleaning up the park.
You're, you're covering subjects that are very com, very complex in, in to implement, whether it's parking and
I'm not...
number parking, uh, mon, monitoring boat launches, and...
No, I don't think I'm complicating, I think it's just a simple, go get a salvage permit, it, I mean, go get a, a permit from the transfer station that you, ensures that you're, put on your vehicle, which shows you're a citizen of Goffstown. There's no cost involved there, and from a monitoring, and as the, you know, police department would just be used to just go by and look to see if that sticker's there.
See, I, I, I guess I have a difficulty, though, if there's a, a boat ramp operated by New Hampshire Fishing Game, and I have a freshwater fishing license, that I can't, I can put my boat in the water, and where do I park, where do I park my car or my trailer?
I have a problem if I'm a Goffstown citizen and I can't get to the lake and I'm paying taxes on it. That's, I mean, I can't serve both masters. But I'll tell you, I'll tell you also, though, when those boats go in, and we sit down here later sometime this year, when budget season comes around, and we start talking about mill foil and things in our lake, and we talk about the funding of that, I don't think it's coming from anybody else but this town.
Okay, so we, what we need to do is, we need to find out what public is, because it's our lake, I'm hearing.
State lake. State home's lake.
We own the beachfront.
Okay, who owns the lake?
I thought water bodies were always regulated by the state.
And it's not our lake?
Right, it's a beach area we own.
Right, I guess that's, that's what I'm...
And the parking area.
The only thing we...
You regulate the beach and the parking area.
Right.
They regulate the boat ramp and the water.
Okay, so we need to find out if that's a compatible requirement or enforcement.
With the boat ramp, with the state that we got in the boat ramp.
Right, and the fact that the, uh, if there was any grant money used in the, uh, when the, when the, when it was written on?
There was, there was state money used. DES gave us a grant to revitalize that area and take care of the erosion and...
I would think.
Cause that, that, and also if, if it does fall with that, the question is, how do we have a kindergarten that's for Goffstown residents only? And it's on that, and that's that same piece of land?
Well, now you, again, you're complicating it.
I'm not complicating, I'm just telling you the reality of it.
We, we don't tell the school district to allow parking in non-school hours there.
No, 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 it's not what we're talking about, we're talking about that the land was all purchased at the same time, sixty acres. We have a kindergarten for Goffstown usage only. I don't, so I don't think it's a big jump to say that the lake in the par, I mean, not the lake, but the beach and the, the parking that is owned by the town can be for public, for, for the town of Goffstown also. That's all. I don't think that's a far jump at all, in fact, it probably falls in common sense.
Could you just clarify? I know the kindergarten school is for Goffstown schoolchildren, are you saying that non-residents cannot park in the parking lot?
No, I'm saying that, that the...
The primary use of the facility is a kindergarten, it's for Goffstown children only.
For Goffstown, for Goffstown residents. All that, that land was purchased for recreational use, correct? Sixty plus acres. And long as it was used for the public. And thus we have a beach and we have parking. And then later on, we put a kindergarten there for public use. And I believe they did apply with HUD, and HUD said, hey, we don't have a problem, cause it's public use. But that public use is in line with just residents of Goffstown. So when we go forward for the definition of what is public use, I would, I would have, you know, I would look at that and say, it looks like public use can be for the town. And when I look at that area, and I say eighteen thousand people in eighteen parking spaces, I would, you know, I would, I would side more with the residents of Goffstown, saying the ones who pay for the maintenance of the park, maintenance of the parking, et cetera, that we would utilize it for town. If it was a larger, if it was a larger, more robust parking, then we'd have a different story, but we have eighteen parking spaces for eighteen thousand people in our town.
I understand what, I understand that completely. I guess also, though, if you have a state boat ramp, okay? And you have it on a lake, and it is there for public use, and it's maintained by fees that are charged for licenses throughout the state, whether they even be non-resident of New Hampshire licenses, because non-residents of the state of New Hampshire pay higher fees for their licenses than residents of New Hampshire. So those people's fee, those fees are now being used to fund a boat ramp that is designated for the public, and what we're asking is, public only being Goffstown.
I, I support the direction you're heading in, Phil, uh, which a derivative of all that is that the parking across the street, which is what cars and trailers is the area where those, those people, those users of our lake would park, when the boat's on the water.
Right, for the boat ramp.
So would be, uh, under, where you're heading in your logic, it would be difficult to restrict parking across the street.
Well, I, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm just trying to present the same argument, but both sides, or both ends of the argument, and I guess that's what we need to resolve. Those, I'm, I guess I'm just trying to explain that in a way that would give the town administrator uh, the direction and the ability to kind of articulate what we need to find out.
And last week you had a, a, a point that was well made, uh, our intention is to promote our recreational opportunities here in Goffstown. And, uh, we have one that is seemingly, uh, becoming popular. And now, this is the first one that is in that category. If we restrict its use, uh, does that lessen a, a goal that we should have to promote recreational activities here in the town?
I would beg to differ just the opposite on that. In fact, I think when we look at it, in, in this town, in, in the Town of Goffstown, um, I'm sure there's more than eighteen people with boats. And this would actually increase the recreation for those people within the town to utilize their boats and have a place to park, and utilize a resource that they pay taxes on. If, you know, we're talking eighteen parking spaces, in fact, eighteen of them, and I think only, don't quote me, I think maybe it's only seven where you can actually park with your boat, the long ones that are across the street. Don't quote me on the number there. I think it's seven there, and then eleven, eleven along the way, but you follow the number, we're close enough. And when you take eighteen thousand people, and how many households, and how many boats we have here, I would, I would advocate even further that that boat launch would still be used, obviously. Two, people within the community would utilize it more, they know they could, they would have access, they would have parking, and it would serve them much better.
I think the best thing for us to do was find out about the public and the restriction of public to resident only before we go further.
Yeah, I, I have to...
Because the further, the, the more this goes on, I mean, the further discussion that this goes is, okay, that's fine. So let's say we make that for non, uh, for residents only. So people now who come from other towns with their boat trailers, all they're gonna do is park further down the road, right off the side of the road, and would you, all we're doing is moving the parking issues further out. So, let's just find, let's see where we can get with this, cause this might, this might answer that.
So that's why I'm looking for that clarification.
Sure, no, I think, I think that's what we need.
It's good to have, to seek clarification from HUD, uh, concerning the use of their grant money years ago that they no longer have record of.
But it's also the DES and we might...
Yes, and Fishing Game.
And we might need, we might need to touch base with the Piscataqua water. Cause they may have something a little further down.
I don't think they're a regulatory agency, though. They're an advisory company.
Advisory board.
Okay, but I thought they had something that was a little further down, just below the dam. That's why some of that parking, that was some of the issues that we had to deal with, there were some other access points. I thought there was an access point that they had something to do with a little bit further down, maybe not. That was below the dam. Maybe not, okay.
Not sure.
Okay, all right, we can move on?
Yeah, I'm good.
Committee reports. Solid Waste Commission.
Well, I'll go ahead and cover this, I had hoping that, uh, the rest of the board will be here, but we'll, uh, we'll do it anyways. I'm gonna make reference to these documents I'm handing out, so let's do that now. Solid Waste Commission met on April fourteenth. I have four points that they reviewed. Uh, the first one is overwhelming portion of the whole meeting was spent discussing the, uh, intention of buying a compactor for recyclable trash. And, uh, you know, I'm sure you, this board's familiar with that, but the idea is to pack more of the single stream material into a trailer, and thereby reducing the number of trips that we make to a disposal site. And the, the trips are the cost drivers. The, uh, two thousand and ten CIP had a, a line for eighty thousand dollars to cover buying a compactor, which happened to be a, a four-yard compactor. It's nomenclature. And, uh, actually that was a, a package, it was a trailer, the actual compactor, and doing some modification... And, uh, actually that was a, a package. It was a trailer, the actual compactor, and doing some modifications to the door, which the trailer is latched onto. Well, it turns out now that the four cu- four yard compactor is inadequate for pushing the trash into the trailer. The, uh, optimal solution is to upsize that compactor to six yards. The Solid Waste Commission agreed to pursue doing that, upgrading it to a six yard compactor. And they did a, a cost analysis, return on investment analysis. And it shows, uh, that the the increased cost from going to a eighteen thousand dollar compactor to a thirty-four thousand dollar compactor is, well, the difference is sixteen thousand. That cost would be offset by decreased hauling costs experienced over an additional eight months of time. So that, all the details is there in that return on investment analysis I've handed out. And of course, that analysis is, um, a potential savings over a period of time. Not necessarily would it occur this budget here. So the bottom line there is, uh, how does the budget provide for a full purchase? If Carl will be here in a moment, and he'll tell you that the trailer is fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred. The, buy the compactor and the door modifications is thirty-four thousand, so the total is ninety-one thousand, seven hundred, which is eleven thousand something more than what the CIP has allocated. The additional cost of eleven thousand dollars will be covered by an unexpected surplus that we'll see in the tipping fees that we pay for disposal of the recyclables. We, the budget had twenty-five dollars per ton to dispose of recyclables. The current fee is, uh, we're experiencing right now is significantly less. And in fact, for the first three months of the year, we've only paid one thousand, seven hundred out of the, the budget line of thirty-one thousand. So later this evening Carl has on our agenda a discussion concerning, uh, accepting a bid to purchase a trailer. And at that time, I urge you to favorably consider that, accepting that bid. The second item, Solid Waste discussed, was a proposed agreement between Manchester, who desires to run a, a test on one street in Manchester of a single stream recycle trash operation. And our town, who will receive their trash, I know this has been brought before our, the board earlier. And I've, uh, this proposed agreement was discussed, modified at the, uh, when the commission met on the fourteenth. I've handed out a copy of it. Carl will, uh, discuss this later this evening.
Maybe even in five minutes.
And, uh, if, uh, once again, if we find it acceptable, I urge you to approve it. The third item on the commission, we received news that the Concord Co-op will soon release their proposed contract for towns willing to join their cooperative agreement for trash disposal. That is, also has been brought before this board. And I expect at some point in the future Carl will, uh, bring that municipal agreement to us for review and acceptance. And finally, the last item the commission discussed was a proposed ordinance, which allows DPW to suspend trash collection services, whether they're curbside collection or people driving in under a permit to the transfer station, if a homeowner or a person has serious violations in the composition of their trash. The commission still has further changes in that ordinance, and it possibly could be brought to this board later. We also discussed that such an ordinance suspending service might be a, I'll call it a secondary solution, cause a, perhaps a better solution would be taking advantage of a RSA thirty-one amendment that was done last year that allows towns to now issue citations for violations of ordinances. You can, you know, read into that a fine if you have a citation. And consequently, the commission's also looking into proposing such ordinance. And that's, uh, four basic items the commission discussed. End of my report.
Any questions?
No questions.
Is there a, another, a matrix with this?
With the agreement?
Yeah, this, it refers to a, um, a cost matrix.
Carl, I simply handed out the two page and, uh, agreement.
Spreadsheet, I think.
I do have a lot of questions, but I imagine.
But, uh, that's.
There's a lot of questions here, but I mean, we're gonna get more specifics, I take it? Are we waiting for Carl or?
I don't know yet. That's, that's a specific, well, this is really an agenda item, uh.
This is a committee report from.
Yeah, and I realize that, but it leaves me.
We'll, we'll cover that in more detail later when Carl has it on his agenda.
Carl, has the single stream recycling hauling agreement been seen by legal yet?
Um, I think it was originally before it went to Manchester.
Before, like, how?
Yeah, I think we drafted it, it was reviewed and then it went to Manchester, and they had their city solicitor look at it, and now it's back with minor revision from there.
Is there any other, uh, committee requests?
That was the only committee that one of us had to attend last week.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, um. Well, what we could do is since that's fresh on everybody's minds, if you want, can just deal with that item first.
Which item? We, we had two or three.
The seven thirty agenda?
It's either that or if you're gonna stay on the agenda, I mean, basically we're gonna have a half hour break.
I, 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 no, I, Carl's here now.
No, no, that's what I'm saying.
Um, I don't think Selectman Pierce was looking for any action on any of these. These are coming back before you later. He was just reporting on what happened at the committee level.
Okay.
But I would also assume we're not taking any action on these this evening.
Right.
No, I didn't thi- I didn't think so, but I guess if there was any questions, since that, well, my point was, since that was fresh on our minds, if there were any discussion, questions on that, um, let's deal with that now and get that off. So I assume.
That was a good point.
If there are no questions or further questions on any of these items?
I guess I'll, I'll jump in on the, on the compactor trailer. I take it the, no matter what trailer or what models you looked at, we were going to have to make, we're gonna have to make changes for the compactor and the door? Is that what happened here? I mean, we weren't expecting that, that's why.
Right, the larger, the larger compactor needs modification.
And when, when you're, just helping me out, the larger compactor, we're, we're talking, we're six?
The six instead of the four.
Correct. And, but the door, you were saying that because it's larger, the doors for, for where, where it pushes out?
Right, the, the door of the building.
Correct.
And then different doors for the trailers. Cause a compactor trailer has a split door, so you can close the top and the ram pushes in the bottom, so there's actually to this building modification, we need to notch the door so that the ram can fit out, to push the, the trailer, you know, push the stuff into the trailer. And, uh, and the doors on the trailer itself have to be changed.
Okay, wouldn't, and, and, and help me out a little bit, uh, cause sometimes I, I, I think what happens, and I think, and I, I'll, I'll, I'll just speak for myself here. I know that I was an advocate for the trailer and the compactor, and I'm, I still am, obviously. It's just that, I, 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 I guess I would expect that when someone says, here's the trailer, we're gonna go to so many yards, and then there was that whole pro forma thing, mileage and man hours, et cetera, where, where it's, where their, where their savings would be. It always catches me off guard when you say, oh, by the way, the trailer doesn't fit into the door. I would've thought we'd be looking at that earlier, or when we were getting the prices, um, that's what can, that's where, that's what, that's what brings my question.
Yeah, and, and I'll take the hit for that. We should've, I mean, that original plan was put together, whatever it was, three years ago, four years ago. And quite frankly, we, we thought that the compactor was the same as the one in the trash building. And, um, we, I, I never even gave it a thought, you know, it was.
Could you just run through the, uh, cause I'm still not clear on why we're going from a four to a six?
Well, I guess the best way to equate it is, is, is different components to the compactor. Obviously, there's the hopper that you put all the stuff in, and at the, the trash compactor, the hopper is that big building that, you know, you throw stuff down the hole, that whole thing, it's the hopper. It falls into a chute and then there's a, there's a big ram, that hydraulic ram that pushes the stuff into the trailer. Like I said, we, we were put together a thing, I don't remember if it was a vendor that suggested four yard, or if we came up with four yard, I don't know where it came from, but we put together the estimate based on a four yard compactor. Now, when, when we started asking vendors to come and quote us the four yard compactor, they came and looked at it and said, you want a four yader to load hundred yard trailers? That's not gonna look, that's not gonna work that great. The bigger the compactor, the bigger the ram. So a four yard compactor, it's, it's, if you could equate it to trying to push things into a tube with a pencil eraser, you know, I mean, that's, you're trying to compact with a little small ram into this great big trailer, we're not gonna get that much compaction. So you go up six, eight, and what we discovered when we had these vendors here, especially when the trash compactor broke down, they were down looking at that at the same time. That one in the trash trailer is a ten yard compactor. Thing's huge, way bigger than the four yader that we priced. So, you know, we kinda went back and forth, should we go as big as an eight yard, you know, and, and we had all the, we had like two or three different vendors there talking to us. And it was kind of a balancing act between, because inside the recycle building doors, remember, we built, we never envisioned a compactor and a hopper. We would've designed a whole different building if we did. So we're, we're, we're already making, we're trying to make something work. But when we got up too big on the compactor, there's a, there's a steel beam inside the door. And we, it's a structural beam, so obviously that limits what we can do. The six yader works, it fits between the beam. We do have to modify the door a little bit so that the ram will fit through. The trailer dimension itself doesn't change, I mean, they all fit inside the trailer. But you, you know, if you've ever seen a trailer back in against the door, there's the big rubber things and, you know, the trailer is much wider than the door when it backs in, so there's some room to play, but the, the garage door that's there just isn't big enough for the, uh, ram to fit through, so. It doesn't have to be modified much, I think we're talking inches, but it, you know, it does have to be modified for it all to work.
Does this cost include the modifications to the building?
It does, yes. That, that builds it all.
What did you spec out for your RFP?
We, well, well, like I said, we got quotes on everything from eight down to four, and the six is kinda in the middle of the road and
Okay.
it's what seemed to work the best for the situation, balancing everything together. With the recycling, it's, it's not as dense, you know, when you get heavy trash, you need a big compactor to really push the stuff in. Not everybody compacts recycling, so we're kinda out there experimenting as we go, but it, it, that seems to be what everybody's suggesting is at least the six, maybe.
I, you probably don't have it with you, and you could send it to us. Can you send us the difference in size, the ram face, between the four and the six?
And I, I apologize, I just wanna make sure I get this clarified. When we're talking right now is that the one that I would throw trash in, the hopper. That door there, there's a ram that comes and pushes it into the truck. And also, we're also talking about the recycling building.
Correct.
And we're gonna use the same trailer for both?
Yeah, essentially they're exactly the same trailer.
So we're gonna have two of these trailers, I take it?
Well, we'll, we'll, when we buy the new one, we'll have a total of four.
Four, okay, cause we rotate one out as fast as they're going, okay. And all of them, are they going to be of the same size now? So if they were that size before, I, I guess I'm, I'm trying to figure out what, is, this is, is this new trailer larger than the other ones?
No. No, they're all the same, they're all hundred yard trailers.
But the, the, the.
Trailers aren't changing.
The compactor has to have a larger door to go through or approach.
No, I think he's questioning why we go into a bigger ram, is that what you're?
We've never had a four yard compactor.
Pardon?
We've never had a four yard compactor.
It was an underestimated concept
Right.
a year ago to put a four yard compactor, and we're trying to correct that right now, to make it a, a better design. But still, the return on investment is reasonable.
Yeah, I, 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 I.
I apologize, with all due respect, we ran the same, in, into the same issue with the shouldering. We, when we do these specs and we go to CIP and we give money requests, does someone look at this to see if it would work? Cause this isn't the first time that we've come back and said, well, you know, I know we have got approved for this, but we've looked at it again and it's really not as big as we need and.
The, the answer, the answer is yes and no. When you, when you're out there doing things that no one else has ever done before, it's hard to, to get perfect estimates upfront. No one else has a compactor in a recycling building doing single stream. We were the first ones to do single stream, we're the first ones to add a compactor. So, you know, all these vendors are working with us and they're trying to come up with something that they think is gonna work the best, but it's not like we have three or four facilities we can go see and say, oh yeah, they do this, they do that. As a matter of fact, we got, you know, other communities that are trying other ways and are coming back to us saying, seeing what we're doing now, cause I mean, we're, we're doing better with our bobcat than what some of the other communities are doing, so. Did we get vendors here? We probably got one vendor. And he did his best to come up with an estimate, and, you know, like I said, that was, that was all the way back when Tom Fatrick was here, so I don't know what transpired. I mean, they put together the plan and it was like three years ago when it was done. And it just kept carrying forward at CIP and, you know, it wasn't until this year when it's okay, now it's time to purchase it, and we started getting other vendors here and really looking at it, that one of them suggested, you're not gonna be happy with a four yard compactor, and that's when we really started digging into it. So, should we have done it? Yes, we should. But when you're doing an estimate for something that's three, four, five years out, you know, you just, it's not perfect detailed estimating, cause, uh, you just don't have time to do every single project in CIP that far out, and usually it gets refined as we get closer, and it just seemed fairly straightforward this time until, until we actually got vendors there to price it.
Is there a, a motion you need this evening to proceed?
Well, the sooner we get approval, the sooner we can get it ordered and get going on.
Do you, uh, you had a bid for the trailer?
Yeah, yeah, that one, that, um.
That's one of the components we're discussing.
Right, the trailer, in, uh, I assume you got my bid recommendations? At, at email with the full bid recommendations?
When did that come in, Carl?
Uh, it's Thursday or Friday.
Probably weren't making a decision on this tonight.
Seventy, yes, seventy in your packets.
Yeah, I, I thought though that, um, prior to this though, I thought it was said that we weren't gonna be making a decision on this, so.
Well, the other three items that Selectman Pierce brought up in his committee report, we wouldn't be making decision, but we do have a decision on bid award recommendations on the agenda tonight and Carl.
Over the trailer.
Yeah, for the trailer.
For the trailer.
Right, that's number four on, on the agenda. Right, okay, so, well, that's why, cause when you were talking about the trailer, that's not a compactor.
Right, two separate things.
So we're going from the compact and now to the trailer?
Well, somebody asked me about the trailer.
Well, somebody asked you if you needed something on this tonight, so that's how we drifted from no decision on this to.
I'm just trying to move, move along.
A decision. Well, I, I understand. I just wanna make sure that we have no further questions at this point on the compactor before we move on to.
Well, I think Selectman Capisano asked for the surface size and face.
Right, he wanted to know, he wanted to know the difference in the area, you, the area or the diameter or the square.
Yeah, and during the week I can go through Selectman Pierce if I have any other questions.
Okay, okay. Right, any, any other questions dealing with the compaction?
Which is not on the agenda tonight.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so that was for discussion only, and now we're going to go down to number four, since we're dealing with trash and recycling, to the closed top walking floor trash trailer. And I'll turn. And I'll turn that over to Carl and Selectman Pierce.
Well, you have, um, you should have my recommendation. We got in, we, we put out two options as we always do when we do these trailers. Normally, we ask for a price for steel and we ask for a price for aluminum.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and our desire is always to get an aluminum trailer, because the, uh, body of the trailer itself is lighter, so we can carry a heavier payload, uh, each trip. So we got our prices back and the aluminum price was significantly more. Uh, you know, it was fifty-five thousand for steel and seventy-two thousand for, for aluminum. That combined with the overrun on the compactor, you know, we had eighty thousand for the whole package. So we knew we were gonna be over either way we did it. But it really made us step back and look at, do we really need an aluminum trailer this time? Where it becomes critical is in trash. Uh, the thing about these loads of recycling, even compacted, we're not gonna get near the capacity of the trailer. Just because recycling is much lighter than, than trash. So, given that, we, you know, we, we really looked at it. We were concerned because we do have our, before we switched to aluminum, ten or eleven or twelve years ago, we do have some steel trailers that are still in stock. It really wrought out bad. So we, we called the vendor back and said, look, we need more detail on your painting, you know, how you paint the trailers. If we go with steel, um, we talked about the application. What he suggested after the fact is, he would recommend, given what we're doing with it, a, a good undercoat first, then the paint application. So he's recommending and we're recommending that we go with the steel trailer, which is lower price. But we had nine hundred dollars for undercoating, uh, priming and undercoating before the paint is applied. And then obviously the extended warranty and the getting the town of Goss Town lettered on the sides were options in the bid as well. So the total price for the low bidder on that with steel was fifty-seven six twenty-five. And that was Steco Trailers from Dorchester, Mass. Um, and they were, they were the whole bid vendor.
Is this the, uh, do we have any other steel bodies, steel trailers?
We, we have two older steel, the old Steco steel trailers, yeah.
From this company?
Yeah. Yeah, actually, they are.
And they've held up okay?
Yeah, like I said, they're, they're starting to rot now, there's a couple of differences. If this is dedicated to recycling, it's certainly not gonna have the slop in it that
Right.
trash is, is in there, so
That's a good point.
that will help. Um, and then the undercoating should really...
Now, do we own any aluminum ones though right now?
Yeah, we have.
It's all we've been buying, it's the same ones.
The last three we've bought have all been aluminum.
So would your intention be to use the two steel ones just, in other words, just steel for recycle?
That would your... Yeah, one of them is not even, one of them we don't even put on the road anymore.
Is that?
It, yeah, it's, I mean, you can see through the sides of it. And so if we don't even leave the yard, we'd be using it more for storage.
You could get more life out of this new, uh, steel trailer if it was dedicated just to recycling material.
Yeah, and it will be, because the, you know, the added weight, we don't wanna take any chances with an overweight trailer, so...
The road, uh, not, not the weight of the, what it's holding, but the total roadway.
Right, right. If you, if we compact the trash into a steel trailer, our fear is we'd be running overweight.
What is the life of a steel one versus a aluminum one? And I, and I, I understand that it's...
Well, the, the steel one I'm talking about that has the, it's rotted through the sides is thirteen years old. Our replacement cycle at CIP is a ten year replacement cycle, not a thirteen year old steel one. It's been off the road for a couple of years, so it's, I mean, it, it met its life.
So it's ten years?
Yeah, that's what, that's what we anticipate is a ten year life.
And aluminum, what you would anticipate it to go?
I, I think they're in on a ten year replacement, but the oldest one we have isn't showing any signs of rotting. So it's probably gonna last longer than the steel ones. But it, they're not that old, I don't, I'm not sure what year the oldest aluminum one is.
The undercoating, where, where, would that be, um, is it a bottom paint or is undercoating under all the painting?
All the painting.
In, inside and out?
No, you, you don't do the inside, it would actually, the material inside would stick if the walls inside were painted. So inside it's just kinda stainless steel. It'll all wear off anyway.
Is there a warranty that goes with that?
There is.
And it is what?
For the trailer or the paint?
For the, yeah, for the undercoating. The, I mean, for the trailer, yeah. Does it, that mean, do they wa, I mean, there must be a warranty?
Yeah, we did an extended warranty, that was one of the options. And I think what we were asking for was three five seven here. Three five seven. That's the paint. We jump right off, I jump a dozen.
But it wasn't beyond ten, I'll take it, I'll take it, yes.
No.
Okay, that, you don't have to look any further then.
Okay, no, it's not beyond ten.
Carl, could you just walk us through the, um, actually, I, I'll...
Did you find it?
Yeah. I don't wanna wait on that.
Carl, did you find it?
I did, Selectman Pierce.
So, do you have a question here?
No, I'll wait. I'll do that offline.
I'm, I'm okay, coffee's not going to be on, done.
For, for the record, Carl, could you read in the bids for the minutes, all the bidders?
I don't have, you have that form in the packet, 'cause I didn't, I don't have that summary form.
I just have the summary, the email summary. Seventeen.
You don't have that spreadsheet we signed?
That upstairs.
Oh, I got it ready. Okay, so, um, the low bid was Steco and it was, um, steel was fifty-five thousand nine seventy-five, with three hundred and seventy-five dollars for lettering and three hundred and seventy-five dollars for steel. I mean, for, um, the extended warranty. And as I said, we asked them for that undercoating, that was an additional nine hundred. The aluminum body price was seventy-one thousand two hundred with three seventy-five and three seventy-five. Donovan Equipment, no, the next, the second bidder was Warren Equipment from Plant City, Florida. Uh, the steel body was sixty-six thousand and they would not bid on the lettering or the extended warranty. Uh, and the aluminum body was seventy-one thousand nine ninety with no bid on the lettering or the extended warranty. The third bidder was Donovan Equipment from Lendary, New Hampshire. The steel bid was sixty-seven thousand oh seventy-three with no bid on the lettering and twenty-five hundred dollars for the extended warranty. And the aluminum body from Donovan was seventy-two thousand five seventy-four with no bid on lettering and twenty-five hundred for the extended warranty.
And that will be posted on the website after our decisions made. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Motion to, uh, accept DPW's recommendation for Steco trailer in the cost of fifty-seven thousand six twenty-five.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay. The next item of Carl is, um...
You wanna stay on the bid award recommendations and get them all out of the way?
Probably would be better.
Um, well, the next, the next one I have is crack sealing. And, uh, we're recommending award, this, this one, and I did bring the, the table for this because there was some analysis involved in it. Um, we had one vendor submit an alternate bid, a lump sum of a hundred thousand dollars. So we had to go back and do a little calculation to see how that might compare to our unit cost price of, uh, price per pound that we asked for in the RFP. So we went back and looked at, um, last year's, we developed a formula from last year's performance, how many pounds we did, you know, per square yard of pavement, and what we anticipated this year if, if a similar, uh, thing, application was applied. And then we called a couple of the vendors and asked them for their, if they had a formula, what they estimated for pounds that they would expect to use in Goss Town. And using all those things we averaged and came up with, uh, an estimate of seventy-five thousand pounds of cracked filler would be used to cover the amount of roads that we specified. So applying that estimate of pounds to our unit prices received, we ended up with two low bidders. U.S. Pavement is from Woburn, Mass. At a dollar twenty-nine a pound. Also at a dollar twenty-nine a pound was, uh, Ax tells. They are from Pennsylvania, somewhere in Pennsylvania, I'm not at all familiar with them, I've never, I've never heard of them. Just to review the other bids we received, um, the third bidder is the alternate lump sum price of a hundred thousand. That's Henry Dow, um, Seal Coating who did the work for us last year. Uh, the next one after that would be Seal Coating Incorporated from Massachusetts, they're a dollar seventy-two a pound. Uh, then Ann Seal from New York State was a dollar eighty-eight a pound. And Nikon, who has done work for us in the past, was two dollars and thirty cents a pound. So there's quite a spread in those bids. The reason we're recommending U.S. Pavement versus, uh, Ax tells is mainly on the material that they specify. One of the things that we asked for in the bid price is, uh, we specify a particular material or an approved equal, uh, be bid on. The product that U.S. Pavement put in the bid is the product that we use every year, it's the one that we're familiar with. The outfit from Pennsylvania is proposing a different material, a D E R E one oh two. Um, I'm not familiar with that product, so, given the fact that one of them is more local and is using the product we're familiar with, that's the one I'm recommending. Hello?
Good evening, how was the marathon?
I came in, uh, thirty thousand one hundred and sixty-six. I think, oh, the marathon of the three hundred seventh graders is also pretty good.
Good.
Yeah. Motion to accept the, uh, Public Works Director's recommendation for awarding of the bid for crack sealing to U.S. Pavement.
Second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
All right, the next two is where we're gonna get in trouble, 'cause I don't have my, my, uh, bid comparisons. Um, tell you what, let's go to the easy one, which is aggregate crushing. Uh, the low bidder was an outfit out of FA, New Hampshire, M Bradshaw. Uh, two dollars and forty-four cents per ton. We're recommending award to, in, to them. Uh, the second bidder was, I think, two dollars and forty-five cents, so it was a penny a ton difference. And then the third bidder was two dollars and forty-nine cents. So these were much tighter. And we end up crushing about ten thousand or so tons to the arm. Yeah. Maybe around twelve thousand tons, so...
Just a quick question, 'cause I've seen, seen that when I was working, how do they weigh these? I mean, I just see this machine being fed and I was always wondering how they weigh all the tons for that.
There's actually a, a scale on the conveyor belt that discharges the material.
So it's, so it's a Macbeth that's going through, I was always curious how that tons came out, right? Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Motion to accept the Public Works Director's recommendation. Second for bid for aggregate crushing.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
The last one is, um, our road striping annual bid. And this one could get a little dicey, because we are not recommending the low bidder. Uh, the low bidder was the same company we had last year. Uh, we were very unhappy with the finished product last year. We were not happy with the, the lines they painted, you know, they just weren't straight, they weren't, uh, they weren't in line. And we had a lot of unhappy residents that drove through paint. And normally, when somebody gets paint on their car, we just refer them to the vendor, give them the name and number of the vendor. I assume the vendor's insurance either takes care of it or whatever. We had a lot of people call us many, many times, because they couldn't get the guy to return their calls, they couldn't get anywhere with them. So they were trying to come back on the town to pay for the damage. And it was really an awkward, um, situation. So we are not recommending that bidder again. The second bidder is Markings Incorporated from Pembroke, Mass. Uh, we have worked with Markings Inc. before, they've done work in town. So their prices are point oh six three for double yellow and point oh three two cents for a single white. Their quantity we do, I mean, you're talking less than a couple thousand dollars difference between the two vendors at the end of the day. So it's not, it's not like it's boatloads of money, but obviously it's, it's not the low bidder either. But we just were not happy with performance last year, so we don't care to repeat that.
Questions?
Do we let the vendor know when we have performance issues with them, and they, and they've been, it's been documented that, okay?
I mean, I'm sure they'll still be unhappy tomorrow, but they're, I mean, we've been up front.
Okay.
We go.
And then, Sue, on the website, when we list, uh, the name, the vendors, uh, are the names included?
Yes.
Yeah, so Carl, uh, fill out the skeleton here af, with you, with the names of the vendors, so...
Carl typically sends a spreadsheet to IT who posts it on the web.
You're, you're giving us the bottom line dollars, which is fine, but the, the names, names have to be on the website.
But it'll also, be also... But it'll also be reflected in the minutes, the discussion?
Mm-hmm, yes, we'll incorporate those spreadsheets into the minutes.
Motion to accept, uh, Director DPW's recommendation for road striping by Markings Incorporated, Pembroke, Massachusetts.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
It's two.
Yes.
Operation question.
Carl, do they put out cones when they paint the lines? And there's still a liability when an individual drives over the wet lines?
Well, generally the claim would be denied, I'm sure, anyway, but you at least have to respond to the people in last year.
I understand, I'm just, I just wanted to clarify, so they do put cones and things out? Thank you.
Uh, seven thirty, I'm just gonna ask, does anybody wanna take a break?
Maybe let Carl get through his next three items?
No, I just, because it was seven thirty and the chairman walked in, I just...
Was this a, is this a public discussion, the roundabout change order?
Yeah, 'cause unfortunately I don't have the change order. I was hoping it was gonna materialize before I got here, but it didn't. But a, as far as the, you know, the general discussion and the road plan discussion, I think we're, we're fine. Hopefully in a minute I can just make sure the cost. And just see how the score on ours. Yeah. I had Brian, I could, he sent me a spreadsheet, but it wouldn't open. I think the numbers that you have on the road plan spreadsheet are reasonably close estimates of what the change order numbers will look like, go very slightly. Yeah, this...
Oh, this one?
Nice version.
Scott, he makes, the one with seven B is outdated. And one was handed out this morning, dated the nineteenth.
Do you have two, there was one at Scott's place and...
When you sat down, there was one here.
Is that underneath your bag?
Yes.
Thanks.
Let me just, uh, let me just run through the road plan, just, um... Selectman Pierce and I did get together and we talked about kinda re-grouping this to... Selectman Pierce and I did get together and we talked about kinda re-grouping this to be a little more organized and cleaning up a little bit. I also added in a little more of the, uh, encumbered money from last year. The reason I hadn't included that originally is, the majority of it is because it, it was, um, it was in awarded contracts. And in my mind, once a contract is awarded, it's no longer available for me to do anything with other than fulfill that contract. So what I did in here is I added the balance of work remaining in those contracts and the offsetting P O. So the numbers kinda offset each other, but, um, there was an additional hundred and, I don't know, seventy thousand or sixty thousand that was left over from last year's P O. And I wanna talk a little bit about where that money comes from. And one of the things that I left on here, as far as estimates, like, you'll see that we took off the, the estimates for so much as square yard for overlay, so much as square yard, because it, Selectman Pierce just didn't feel that was helpful to the discussion at the moment. But I did keep on the estimated paving bid price at the top. And the reason I kept that on there was, you know, you folks, at least those of you on the board last year, remember that we changed our paving RFP to include the, uh, escalator for liquid asphalt. So the price of asphalt, even though we're going up the bid, the price of pavement asphalt fluctuates throughout the year, based on the price of liquid asphalt and diesel fuel. So last year, we had a bid price, and I don't even remember what the bid price was, but liquid asphalt went lower. So for the majority of last year, we were paying, you know, say the bid price was sixty-eight or seventy dollars a ton, but we were actually paying like fifty-eight to sixty-two dollars a ton, because the liquid asphalt price had dropped significantly after the bid was awarded. So at the end of the year, I think there's money left over. The same with, with this, when we first, um, when you look, if you look at like last week's packet or two weeks ago's packet when I came in, I had an estimated bid price of seventy dollars a ton at the top of this, um, sheet. Every number on this sheet is accepted by that seventy dollars a ton. Last week, we got in a, an estimate from Pike, Pike Industries. The, the, when we go to get mixed, the patch pot holes or when we're doing our mill and fill, when we're using our trucks to go get mixed, we just run over the Hookset, we buy the asphalt from Pike. And we just pay the gate drop price, um, to show up at their gate and pick it up. So we got an updated letter on the current price of that product. And, uh, in the letter, it said, you know, base asphalt right now, today, and Pike and Hookset is fifty-eight dollars a ton, and top asphalt, finished asphalt is, is sixty-two dollars a ton. So Megan and I were both kinda working on this spreadsheet simultaneously, well, she saw that letter and she went in and she edited it and put sixty-two dollars a ton, thinking, okay, we got that price, so we'll estimate based on that. Well, that scared the bejesus out of me, because it changed the bottom line, suddenly, we had a four hundred something thousand dollars in a contingency at the bottom. I don't wanna commit to that right now, because that seems pretty low to me, and if the order goes up, um, it seems to me that we would then be, I don't wanna be whopping projects off. I'd rather be later in the season talking about, hey, looks like we'll have enough money to add a road or do something like that than trying to whop it off. Especially with Mass Road floating around down there and the, the fact that we know we need a contingency at the end. So the reason you got all these iterations and it got so confusing is we were playing with that number. And I, I wanted to keep that number showing, so that as, in the future, as we pull these things out, we'll know the basis by which all these other numbers are derived. So with an estimate of sixty-eight dollars a ton, and we, we opened the paving bids, by the way, I think they opened May sixth is when they're due. So at that point, we'll have a much better handle on what that number should be at the start of the year, but for now, my best guess is sixty-eight dollars a ton. So given that, um, what we've done in here, the changes we've made since you saw this last, we have the Mass Road Roundabout and the Worthy, uh, realignment. Now, what we got, just so you know, last Thursday, we did get, uh, a change order number from Delory. And we got kinda simultaneously with that, pardon the, quote unquote, final plan from McFarland Johnson for construction. As we sat down and looked through that final plan, some of the negotiations that Selectman DeVanzo and I have been involved in with the abutters, were not reflected on these final plans. And some of those abutters have actually said to us, look, we're not signing nothing till we see the final plans, 'cause we wanna make sure that final plans are what we're signing off on. So we had to turn around last Friday, Megan went up and met with McFarland Johnson and went through all of those items. So last minute revisions have to still be made, and numbers have to go back and forth between Delory again. So that's why I don't have a, a finished number for you tonight, but we're very, very close, we're down to a few minor items that we're still working on. You'll see that I added Wallace Road back in here, that'll be for discussion later, we don't have to beat ourselves to death just yet on that. Other than that, pretty much the same list you saw, with the exception of, if you go down near the bottom, we're gonna talk about the sidewalk plan, we've got a little more detail there. We estimated the Mass Road paved bike lane, uh, we're looking at about a seven foot wide paved shoulder. There is a small section, about three hundred and twenty or so feet of some sort of retaining wall that we'll have to put in along the slope to get it, uh, that wide. But we're estimating that at about eighty thousand dollars. And then we also have, uh, as you see down in the reclamation, we've added the Page Hill and Shirley Hill and the South Mass Ara projects, those are all, uh, the work remaining on those committed projects. So they offset with the, uh, some of the one point three million dollar encumbrance, so those are all ongoing projects. We also found money for, um, Miles Ave and Mosef. Those were the two roads that we talked about the last time, that, uh, we really should try to find a way to get them done. And I think we talked about shimming on Mosef, but after the, after we talked about shimming, and we got back, and we started really looking at it, what Mosef is, is Mosef is one of our twenty-eight foot wide paved roads. There was a short period in our history when we specified a twenty-eight foot wide road. We don't need twenty-eight feet of pavement. So if we narrow Mosef down to twenty-four feet where all our other roads are, it gives us room to put ditch lines in, proper ditch lines. Uh, and it narrows or it cuts down on the amount of pavement that we need to, uh, place. So if we were to do that, um, we've come up with a number of, uh, just a little bit more, like an extra thirty thousand, we could actually reclaim Mosef, not a full blown with fabric and everything, but grind it. There's a little bit of drainage work to do out there, you know, crossover pipes and the ditch lines, and then grind it, crown it, and pave it, and we would do a two and a half inch airport mix. Hopefully, go back next year and put the, the wear course on it, but we put more of a tight binder on it, um, just, just to, to get through the, the winter and, and, uh, have a product that could last a year or two if we don't get there next year and, and, um, put the final asphalt in. We're pretty much talking about the same treatment on Miles Ave. So bottom line, if we add those in, we have a two hundred and forty thousand dollar contingency, which, as I said, is more or less for Mass Road. And keep in mind that that sixty-eight dollars a ton at the top really controls all the numbers, so we have to really watch the current price of asphalt as we go through the season to see where we're at and how it's tracking with this. Now, back to Wallace Road, um, I'll take the hit if the board doesn't want it there, but it seemed to me, as the guy sitting here listening to the discussion, that the main objection to Wallace Road, I think everybody admitted it should be done. But there was, uh, Selectman Fornia who really felt like we should be looking at the sidewalk on Ma- on Mass Road. And I think Selectman Campasano was saying, if we've got a hundred thousand kicking around, we oughta put it into, to, uh, Mosef before we do, uh, that little chunk of Wallace Road. So we tried to take all that into consideration and balance things, and we have here what I think we addressed all those comments. So we would like to take care of Wallace Road while we're there, get it done up to the high school, and just be done with it.
Thank you for adding Mosef under reclamation, um, and for this board's knowledge, uh, if you wanted to add another sixty thousand, sixty-one thousand dollars to that, you could put fabric down as part of the reclamation. That, putting fabric down is the preferred approach, uh, but it's not being done on this case, trying to make it more economical. Just wanna bring that out in case you were thinking.
It's economics and time. The fabric adds a whole lot of time, too, so it's, there's those two factors.
The one, the one thirty-one thousand is a, a good economical and time approach for doing that project.
Carl, I have a couple of questions. On the, uh, pavement number of sixty-eight dollars a ton, if that number changes to, let's say, seventy-two, two or seventy-four, how does it affect the bottom line? I guess the question that I'm actually asking you is, how many tons of asphalt, or what's that number of?
Well, I, I didn't calculate it on tons, but I'll tell you that the difference between sixty-two and sixty-eight was about a hundred and sixty thousand. So I don't know what that math works out to, but if you add another six tons, then we'd be right around that range, I would guess, into changing the bottom line.
And we'll know in May?
We'll know what the starting price is, you know, it fluctuates depending on what liquid does over the season. You know, we might start out in May at one price, and then in June, we're at a whole different price.
Now, I know we bid out our, our oil and we're locked in on that, there's no such thing in, in the pavement where we know we're buying X amount of cubic feet of asphalt, cubic yards?
Remember that, uh, we always used to lock them into a price, and.
And I know the prices went crazy with the volatility of the market, now no one wants to do that?
Well, what happens, because the pavers, the, uh, the paving contractors took it so hard on the chin that year, that if they're bidding on a product where they're assuming all the risk, they're gonna cover themselves.
So they have an escalator in there?
Yeah, they're gonna bid it high, just based on, just in case this takes the risk off of them and puts it on us, so they can bid it fairly with, knowing that as the market fluctuates. A big product they need to buy, that they have no control over is the liquid asphalt. You know, the rest of the ingredients that go into it are the aggregate that they own from some pit that they own.
I, I guess what I'm trying to say is that they can't buy it like oil is bought, and you're, you're buying, you're committing to a future.
Pre-buy.
You're pre-buy, alright.
No, and it's definitely one of those limited supply, it's like one vendor on the East Coast that they can get it from.
Couple of questions, on the encumbered money, Carl, I'm just trying to look, there's about a five. Just trying to figure, the Ara money that you brought over and you put into the encumbered money? Was that the, um, the six ninety-nine, nine twenty-four, and the forty thousand, five eighty-seven?
Yep.
Okay.
Some of that work was done, so there wasn't a total of six ninety-nine, 'cause we did do Williamson and we did some work under this union. So the balance, the January first balance is what it brought forward, after we paid so many invoices.
Um, on, on Mosef, I'm just trying to understand, when I look at the estimates, including fabric, if we do the fabric, is that a reclamation? But that comes out to like seventeen dollars per square yard, how is that compared to?
This is not one of our spreadsheet estimates, if that's what you're comparing it to.
Well, I'm trying, 'cause I'm just going by your, yes, if we do it in-house, it's twenty-one dollars a square yard if we do it out.
That twenty-one dollars a square yard is an average number of all the, the Snook Roads and the other in-house projects that we've done, when you total everything together. This project, we went out, and it's, it's gonna be much leaner than those full-blown projects. I mean, we're literally gonna replace a couple of pipes, we're gonna grind it, we're gonna grade it, we're gonna pave it, so it's not, it's not like we're putting in a whole drainage infrastructure and, and, uh, putting the fabric down, and it, it's a different sort of product. So we, this, the estimate is a much simpler estimate, I mean, it's, it's, went out and measured the road and figured out how many tons of asphalt and how many square yards of grinding, and we didn't add in our time, so that doesn't include our time, it doesn't include any of that stuff. So, yeah, it is cheaper than, say, Snook Road and those others, but, but we plan to be in and out of there a lot quicker than we were on the other projects, too. We won't be nearly as much involved in it. It's, it's much better than a shim, but it's not a full reclaim. You think?
You said?
For now, yeah.
Um, okay, so you're, you're getting, you're getting to, you're getting to my question on that, 'cause, uh, Dave said sixty, add sixty thousand for the fabric. At what point, if we were to go forward, at what point would be, we be ready for fabric? Appro- approximately what time of the year, do you have any idea when the scheduling would be?
I know we're in Fernandville now, so I would guess we'd wait for everything to dry out and probably be targeting, and I, and I don't know this, I haven't sat down with Mike and we haven't laid out that, that schedule in that much detail, but I would guess we're targeting, um, sometime in July and August, when downtown is really a mess, that sounds like a good corner to hide in.
Right, I g- I guess the reason why I'm a- I'm asking that, and, and, and I, I, I have, it, there's two questions, where I'm going with that is, at that point in time, um, if we were to, if we were to look at it and see that, let's say, the liquid asphalt price remained the same and everything was the fa- same. Or if they were going up and now it was really starting to cut into the bottom line on it, we might not have, or might be, you know, running close and it might be, uh, um, and not do the fabric. So I, I guess I'm looking at approximately that point in time, that if we were to go forward, that we could look at it at that point.
The other, the other thing with later in the season is, the biggest, the Mass Road sewer job is in three phases. And phase one, which is from College Road down to Roosevelt, is also the area, it's the area where there's deep gas poons over in Mass Road, it's also the area where the drainage pipes are the most beat up and shot. So by a few months into the summer, we should have a much better handle on what we're up against.
Right.
That drainage on Mass Road as well.
Right, I mean, it's very possible that we might not be able to do it, put the fabric down, 'cause we need the money over, over there, but I, I, I guess where I'm, I, I, I'm going with the questioning, though, is doing Mosef this way, okay? Where it's not a reclaim, but it's better than a shim, someplace in between. I guess what, what would we be looking, I know it's tough, it's a tough question, but I guess we're doing better than a shim, but we're not doing a reclaim. And if that's the case, what is the value of putting down fabric at? In, in that sense, it's not a, not a reclaim, 'cause you're not doing all your drainage.
Well, it, it is, it, I guess that's an unfair characterization, 'cause we are gonna reclaim the pavement, we'll reclaim down to the ten inches, but the, the difference is, it will not have the drainage infrastructure and all the under drainage that we would put in, that we normally put in when we're doing a full-blown, uh, reclaim job. Now, what the fabric does, and Mosef is a great candidate for fabric, because you wanna put fabric when your groundwater table is within four feet of your septic. And we have that, I mean, Mosef has flowed water, so it's, it'd be a great place to put fabric. But it also, to, to put fabric down on Mosef, we would have to dedicate a crew probably for a month just doing fabric, you know, I mean, it's, it's a time more than the cost of the fabric, it's the, it's a real time sucker, too, 'cause you have to lift all that reclaim up, put the fabric down, and then lay that reclaim back down on top of the fabric. So it's, it's a very, very time-consuming, uh, thing, and our major goal for this year is, we wanna get this list cleaned up. I don't wanna come back at the end of the year and say, jeez, we got a million dollars, we got an encumber, because we didn't get the roads done. So, uh, my staff knows that our main priority this year is, we don't have a great big project. Now, I say that, that was before we added Mosef, before we added Lauren Mayne, before we added Miles, Miles Ave, we didn't have any big reclaim jobs, so it was, we should be able to get caught up. And now I've kinda thrown those roads at my, my crew and said, guess what, let's try to squeeze these in, so I'm already kinda asking for trouble, and if we, if we do the fabric, it'll add a lot of time.
When I look at the bottom of the sheet, I just need some clarification, I apologize, and we're talking reclamation, we're talking those roads there, every road is a reclamation project, correct? And when I look at the price over here, and we'll, and we'll, and since we're speaking about Mosef, we'll, we'll say the one thirty-one, you said it's another sixty thousand to put the fabric on, so that would make that road a hundred and ninety thousand dollar road. You said it's another sixty thousand to put the fabric on, that I would make that road a hundred and ninety thousand dollar road. Is there fabric in these other ones?
Uh, no. Well, Page, Page Hill and Shirley Hill, yes. Uh, South Mass, some areas, and the rest of them, no.
So, Page Hill would have, would have it, and you said Shirley Hill?
Yeah.
Now, okay, and, and here's, I guess I'm gonna get to that question. When we talk about, when we talk about Shirley Hill or Page Hill, how long a section are we doing on those roads?
Already been done.
It's the wear course.
It's just the wear course.
This is just the wear course. Those are the ones that we did last year, Steve. Okay, okay, that's the reclamation, that's the end piece of it. Okay, so it's not, it just says, okay.
Yeah, it's down there in the reclamation.
It's on the reclamation, so I'm thinking it's the.
Right, that's last two thousand and nine next to it.
Right.
I don't have any two thousand and nine on that.
Yeah, right next to the right of it, where it says Page Hill Road.
Oh, I apologize.
Two thousand and nine.
And so, those roads are set, and so when we do, so when we do Mo Set, that's a hundred and ninety thousand dollars whenever we put, you know, cause of the sixty thousand for that piece. And that's about, we, we, what'd we say, was it three quarters of a mile? It's not a long road.
No.
Thirty-six hundred feet, I think.
But the point, the point that I think is well-taken from Phil's discussion that in two to three months from now, if you're just about ready to put a crew out on Mo Set, and if you can see some wiggle room in the contingency money, then please come back and say, hey, we're gonna put fabric down. But if, you know, that's where, you know, Carl, we're off to a great stock and everything is going great so far. We'd be willing to listen to your argument if you would come back and do that.
Just a, I, I guess the only thing that troubles me is, we had the two thousand and ten road plan that you brought to us with a list of roads. And I'm assuming that you didn't just find this other money, in other words, it was in here. And so, I, I look at, these are the projects that you thought you could do for the year. So, I'm, I'm just a little uneasy about adding Miles and Lauren Lane to, to a project that, or a plan that you've already said, this is what we're gonna do this year, um, time-wise. Particularly because there's a lot of projects in here that I think are gonna take your crew. And I, I just assume see that dollar amount left in the contingency towards the end of the year to see what, what pops up versus, um, committing it to those two roads that kinda got added afterwards.
Well, Lauren Lane was added, you know, right up front with the discussion of Tivitz and that was like the very first meeting when they talked about things.
A while back we added that.
It is a very short, it's not a big road, that's just that little entry into the middle school.
Was added as a discussion from this board?
Oh, yeah, we had a discussion, cause I remember we had a discussion on the drainage and I.
It wasn't the meeting, it wasn't here though.
Correct. Cause we had that discussion.
Well, I didn't mean to imply that, I'm just.
No, 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 but I'm just, I'm just trying to remo- re- refresh people's memory, cause we had a discussion on the drainage. And I said, when that road was built, they only had one, uh, they only had one drain pipe underneath there. And Jeff Sarette came back for the town at some point later on, quite a few years later, and redesigned that and, and put two. Because you couldn't go down with the lar- you couldn't make the pipe larger, so we put another one next to it. There's always been a drainage issue on Lauren Lane. We had that discussion earlier this year.
Um, and, and you know, as far as Miles, like I said, I put it on because it seemed like, and, and just to address where the money came from, you know, Seligman Campus I know pointed out last time, we had three hundred and fifty, I think, showing in the encumbered monies. But the P O actually had about four hundred and sixty-four thousand left on it or whatever. Um, so that's quote-unquote found money. It was a, more or less a contingency that I had hanging around. I never commit a hundred percent of the funds because I know the price is floating, but I feel like we've adequately talked about that. You guys know that the price floats, so if we, if we get into a bind, I can come back and say, hey, the price is up to seventy-two bucks a ton, so we gotta back off something. The other place that we save money is right there, that we went from seventy dollars down to sixty-eight, which again, we found money in this spreadsheet. Now, whether or not we committed or keep it in a contingency line, we're gonna be monitoring this as we go through the season. So, I, I think we can, if it looks like the prices are gonna go crazy, we can back off. And those would be the first ones I chuck off the list of the ones we added at the end.
And I appreciate what you're, what you're saying, but that contingency money should be shown in the balance. So, for myself, what I would like to see when we see a road plan is, at the top, all the dollars. Every cent, encumbered, budgeted, then, like you did here, you're basing it on seventy dollars or sixty-eight dollars. So, we know that everything here is contingent on that. Should that price change, I mean, it's very obvious these change. And then there should be a balance that when you add all of these things up, should equal all of the, the money that you have this year available, whether it's encumbered, budgeted, what have you.
Yeah, that's what this does.
Right.
Right, this does, yes.
Right, yes, right.
And, and, uh, you know, the two-dollar amounts at the bottom add up to the, the funding source at the top.
They do.
Now, the one thing that Seligman Pierce had brought to me that, and I added some columns here, but I just, I wanted to talk to the board about it, uh, and that is schedule. And I appreciate you guys wanting to get your hands around schedule. So, I did sit down with, with Mike Hillhouse and we made an attempt at, all right, let's, let's take a crack at this. And of course, the first thing we realized is, we don't open bids till May sixth. So, almost all of them are to be announced when we find out which vendor we're working with and what the schedule is. All of the private contracts, the big ones, um, we have been trying but have not gotten schedules from them. So, all those are pending. Uh, I was hoping I'd get one with the DeLory estimate, but it, it didn't come. The same with Mass Road, I, I asked for it again Friday and it still isn't forthcoming. So, when we get those, obviously I'll plug them in. The, the things that we got confused in trying to fill this in, and I just, I wanna, I guess, explain our process a little and then get a feel for what you think would suit your needs. First of all, the estimated duration, you know that as a public works crew, one of the things we've always struggled with is, we are at the beck and call of the phone. So, all good intention, we could say, come in Monday morning and say, this week we're gonna go tackle this. And then we get a rainstorm or we get whatever, and the phone rings and suddenly there's a bigger emergency tomorrow than what we planned, so we jump around. It, it is frustrating for somebody like your folks that are, wanna look at a schedule and say, how come this didn't get done? Or if you wanna compare our production with John Neville's production, it's frustrating, cause John Neville can put a crew over there and they never leave. They stay there until the job's done. Uh, whereas us, we have to pull guys off to go to this, we gotta pull guys off to substitute on the garbage truck. We got, you know, so there's all kinds of things that interfere with us being able to stay. Obviously, the price reflects, I mean, we are more inexpensive, so there's a balancing act. When we look at estimated duration, the first question that jumps into our mind is, what do we put there? We might have a rainy day like we did last week, and we'll pull a couple guys and say, hey, you know what, we gotta, we've got these roads on this list. We don't know when we're gonna get to pave them, but they need to be swept. The brush needs to be cut back. A couple of catch basins need to be adjusted, so we might send a crew out and they might be there for one or two days. Then they might disappear for two months. And then finally, it's, okay, let's go back now. The pavers are coming in a couple of weeks, so let's really get that ready. So, I don't know if duration should be, you know, from the day we touch it to the day we're finished? Or do you wanna see that, you know, a typical overlay road is, you know, two days of raising structures and one day of paving and one day of shouldering? You know, I mean, that's, but the way we do it, it's kinda spread out through the year. There's no, you know, shouldn't take more than four days, but it might be a day here, a day a month later and two days.
Speaking for myself, I, I don't, I wouldn't be looking for that. If you just put a column that said, started, so any project that started, you put a check mark next to. Another column that gives us maybe a, I guess, twenty percent done, fifty percent done, seventy, so that we have like an update. And then maybe a notes section after that, you know, project on hold until catch basins come in or whatever. So, I, I'm really not that, and I'm just speaking for myself, interested in, when are you gonna start, when are you gonna finish? I mean, because all of those things in the notes will tell us it's been raining, but at least we could see at a glance, these projects have been started, these haven't. These are halfway completed, these are twenty-five percent completed.
The, the percent is another thing that's difficult, because all the money is the day we pave, you know? So, we can go out and adjust some catch basins and it'll be like, right up to the day the paver shows up, it'll be like, you know, point two percent or two percent. And then all of a sudden, they'll get paved, whoop, there we go.
Well, I'm not looking for dollars, for that to correlate to dollars, but I think that's just like a project status as far as completion.
I, I would, I maintain if, if all the work that Carl would have to do to put percentages in there and, and, uh, maybe overkill for the information that this board needs. And, and I would be happy with something that the project is in work. He has started some serious phase of the work and therefore internally, he's committed to keep it going. And the other one is, I'd like to know if it's been completed. His crew is all out of there, whether it's contract or his. And, and we can look at this month by month and we can say, four of those have already been completed.
So, are you saying with, if I, oh, I'm sorry.
We would be, we would be, we would have some useful information that this ta- a certain task has been completed. The others are, are in work. And then you could have a third column with a, with notes, as he suggested, something that we would have to be aware of. But I'm trying to, I'm trying to not have his staff spend hours every week or once a month to make this pitch perfect to the nearest percent or twenty percent.
I mean, twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five, be happy there. And I, I would think that after years of doing roads, you, for most, I mean, some of these, maybe they are a drainage, but for most, a reclamation and overlay, you should be able to say, we're halfway done, we're, I'm not looking thirty percent, thirty-two percent, fifty-six percent. Are you halfway done? You're three quarters done?
Couple, like a month ago, three weeks ago, you know, you sold me on, on the notion of if I, if I was doing a home improvement, but I want two G C's and I'm like, you convinced me that makes sense. But for the same token, if I'm hiring a general contractor for my house, I'm gonna expect that if I'm gonna, I, I've gotta pay this person. I know, I know the jobs are different, but I kinda wanna know, when you're gonna be tearing up my house? How long is it gonna be torn up for? I understand there was rainy days and Sundays and always gonna get me down, but I, I wanna kinda know these things. And I think that's one of the difficulties, is that we seem to have a lot of always loose ends. We start something, start another one, start another one, and before you know it, it's at the end of the season, it's like, yeah, we got an encumber. I think it goes back to what you were saying before, Carl, we don't wanna do that. We really wanna try to button things up, close them down, start them and finish them. And I think we're, I, I personally was looking for, where are we in that, in that process? I do not wanna create more busy work for anyone, I just don't. But this is project management, and project management, you, whether you're building a building or you're building a road, there should be some time elements or timeframes, that's all.
The other thing I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that the board understands, and I think you do, but, um, we don't control, we control the schedule somewhat, but the way it works, doesn't matter if we have Brock's or Continental or Pike, right? They're working for a hundred other towns in the state and everybody else. And the way it works is, we get a call from whoever the manager of our town is, from whatever company we're working with. They'll call us and they'll say, look, we just added Cost Town for two days and it's scheduled ten days from now. So, they try to give us a heads up. It's never, we've got two days this month and three days next month. And it's a call that, hey, I just got a couple of days freed up next week, what do you got for me? Or I just got, I just put you on the schedule ten days out for two days. Then it's, then we react to that and say, okay, what do we got? What can we get ready? They got two days worth of work or they got two days to come, so we'll jump on what we think we have ready. Now, the whole time, it's a dance. We're trying to prep ahead of them. We don't know when they're gonna show up. And that's the way the whole summer goes, back and forth. Now, if they take into account, it rains. Well, everybody between us, you know, that's between that phone call and when they're gonna show up in town, gets screwed up by the rain. So, the whole schedule just shifts and juggles and changes and you get called.
Like the airline industry then?
Exactly, like the airline industry.
You're stranded in Europe right now.
We do the best we can to manage it, and, and I'll tell you, Mike Hillhouse is one of the best I've ever seen at reacting and managing and prepping. And that's what, that's his real, uh, strength and skillset. But it's, 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 it's a challenge. You've got so many cooks in the kitchen, uh, that, that it, it really is, it's a dance. And, uh, between the, the paving, you know, the schedulers.
It's not like we pick up the phone, uh, we've started a project, we are ready for pavement on Mo Set.
Right.
And we need it in two weeks, so like, have a nice day, we'll get to you when we call you.
Exactly. They have scheduling meetings with all of their districts, and they look at all their contracts. And, you know, they might have four or five schedulers covering the southern part of the state. And those guys sit there and say, all right, what do we got for crews? What can we do when? And they schedule out a couple of weeks out, but bad weather, the whole plan they just put together goes in the, in the, in the drain and we start over.
Okay, um, I was probably going, thinking a little simpler, am I? And I'll probably work backwards. I think it's easy to say, road's completed and have a date, so we can all agree with that. Once it's completed, we can have a date when it's completed. I wasn't thinking so much about the, the, the part where your crew might go out, clear some drainage or some trees. And I realize that you're saying you're waiting for May sixth, but all of a sudden you get that call and then ten days later, all of a sudden, we would say, hey, they started last week. They started on whatever road, let's say they, uh, Montaloma. And we, and we expect them to, you know, when I say they, meaning now, they're, they're actually, you know, we're not talking the wood cutter, the drainage type pieces, but they're there where, where people can see that happening. And we'd say, hey, it's gonna, we expect it to be a two-week process and then at the end we'd have that completion date. I'm not looking for a lot of busy work, like you say, with that, but I would expect a completion date. And then when we actually see them activated and whatever company that, that, that had bid for that shows up and they're on the site, would that be simple enough? Or, you follow what I'm saying?
I, I follow exactly what you're saying.
I'm not looking to see like, oh, we went there a month ago, we cleared it out and we're waiting for them to come next week. I'm saying when that, when they come in, they're gonna start doing that road, be they rip it or repaving it, they, they're coming next week.
I, and I, and I can appreciate.
Would that be doable?
No.
No. I thought that was a simple, I thought that was a simple one.
No, I, I, I just, what, what I, what I was gonna try to say was what Carl was trying to address. Because the point that I was trying to make is, if you wanna understand how that world works, go down and spend two hours down at Public Works on a couple of different days during the week, and you'll, you'll follow.
Well, let, let, let me clarify, I guess, I'm looking at all these blanks here. How's that, okay? In other words, all these roads in there blank and all of a sudden we're, we, we vote, we go forward, we're gonna do the project. And all of a sudden, I, I might, all of a sudden, an update would be, would, would all of a sudden I might see maybe two of these roads. That's when you know, they're, they said, hey, we're gonna, we're coming out in ten days. So, there's that piece and they think it'll be there two weeks, and when it's done, put the date in, and that's all I'm looking for. And we would, and we would see the process going through, through the summer as roads are completed.
That, that we can do. I could, I could put kind of a priority list, you know, we're targeting these early in the season, late in the season. We could do something like that. But what I fear with what you just said is, cause the words you used were, if we go out and do something and say Resident, Joe Residence sees us out there adjusting a catch basin and they call you, I don't want you pulling this out and saying, oh, they just started. That's a ten-day project, so they'll be done in ten days. If we're out there adjusting catch basins, then we're gonna disappear for five weeks. And then when we come back, it's gonna be five days. That's my only fear is, because we, we, we take in, we have, our crews are set, right? We have two crews. If we can't dig for a day, those crews are disassembled and all right, you three guys go do this today. You two take that machine and go do the, we'll do small jobs that we can do in wet weather. So, we might go out and try to knock off some of the prep work that has to be done if it's something we can do. And it makes it confusing for those people that see us show up. And it, it leads to, to grasp me around, but that's our fear. It leads to, it took them a year to do it. No, if you add up the actual time we were on the job, it didn't take a year. But we started one month and then winter shut down and this and that, and it seems like it took a year, but it really, we weren't on the ground for a year. And that's, that's my only concern is.
Carl, just, what, what's the, um, your crew's involvement when you do a wear course? Just quickly, what do they have?
Well, wear course would just be, um, any serious drainage problems, like a collapsed pipe or a collapsed structure. We'd get it ahead of that and try to fix it. Uh, if ditch lines needed to be opened up and regraded, we would do that.
Maintenance overlay?
Same, same thing. Any overlay, that's what we're doing.
And then shim and overlay, do you do the?
No, uh, shim and overlay, we tend to not do as much drainage work. We kinda just, those are more left unless there's something really, really a problem. The contractor just does them when he can. So, we'll, we'll peel the loam out of the pavement and sweep it off, but that's about all we're gonna do on those.
Uh, mill and overlay?
Well, those, you have to adjust all the structures ahead of the miller. The miller does the milling.
That's most of the work, that's very involved.
Those are very labor-intensive, yeah.
And you do all the drainage?
Yeah. And the reclaims are probably the most involved, cause that, you're actually installing stuff.
Okay. So I guess we all know what we're gonna wind up with, right?
A completion date, a completion date.
Well, I think, I think, I think one thing I could, it sounds like it's somewhat doable is you have, for many of these projects, you have your prep work. When the prep work is done and all you're doing is waiting final pavement, then that's all it would say. Prep work complete, awaiting final pavement.
I like the notes.
Then if, if it's been scheduled, because you'll know that, but you'll get your ten days or fourteen days notice, put it in, you know? I'll prep for, you know, prep for pavement, then I'll say pavement by this date.
Yeah, the note, I think the note follows.
Yeah.
Since, since we're, uh, tackling new ground here as far as getting information from DPW on a, a wide scope of yearly projects, perhaps we need to make it simpler from the start as suggested and just say, let him, let Carl give us useful notes, which we would, which would help us understand the status of these projects. And, and then of course, at the end, the most useful note will be the word completed.
I, I, I'd just like to clarify for the record that I didn't really want on these, some of these little things. I, the vast majority of, I don't, not that I don't want the status, but I'm talking about the roundabout, the bigger projects I think you need. That's where, where I'm at. Not so, with, the ones that you know are gonna entail traffic issues, a lot of these are side streets and, um.
That, that could be a note, you know, the, the roundabout, start date, you know?
I'm just saying, there, there are arterial roads, Tibbetts Hills and Arterial Road, Montaloma, some of these are arterial roads and it matters, others I just don't.
That's, I, I recommend we give him the flexibility to give us useful information and note and we'll try it out. This is our first time trying to nail, nail him down.
And your work will call on that, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good, move on now? We, we haven't discussed the, uh, the cycle time with this nice report. You want, you don't want it every day, but would you like it once a month?
Yeah.
Once a month.
Add it to a report.
Yeah.
Motion to accept the revised road plan as presented by the Public Works Director.
I second that.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, thank you very much.
What's your next item?
Oh, God.
Sidewalks.
Truncated something on that.
What we did, I had told the board we'd done a sidewalk inventory and we broke it into, from our perspective, three different and separated, uh, separate priorities. First of all, the, the top priority in our mind was how many intersections or corners do we have that have no compliance elements whatsoever? There's no tip downs, no truncated domes. What the truncated domes are are those old bumpy things that the walking stick or the blind stick picks up on and you're, you're getting near the pavement. Every intersection's supposed to have an adequate tip down to the street and you're supposed to have those truncated domes before you enter onto the pavement. So we have nineteen, fewer than I expected, nineteen that have neither tip downs nor truncated domes. So in our mind, to get ADA compliance, that was our number one place to start. Priority two are areas that have the tip downs but do not have the truncated dome plates. So, uh, we have, you can see there's a, quite a large number of them, a hundred and ninety-eight of those, uh, corners. And then thirteen of those are already involved in things like the South Mass project, uh, roundabout project. So if you take those out, we have a hundred and eighty-five, uh, tip downs that are just missing truncated domes. So what I, I guess what I, the way I characterize this is priority one are the things that we can get seriously slammed for because a, a wheelchair couldn't navigate it if it wanted to. Priority two are the ones that were, were there for most of it, but we really need to add the truncated dome. That's like the low hanging fruit. Those are the fairly easy things to deal with. Doesn't involve curving per se, it's just get the, the dome plates in. Uh, and then priority three are the sidewalks that just, they're either too narrow or just nothing about the sidewalk itself complies with ADA. You can see it's very costly. We have, uh, about sixty-seven thousand dollars, sixty thousand dollars a year that we're working with right now. Trying to, uh, bring these in a compliance. We try every year to leverage these projects with the road plan activities as much as we can to get more bang for our buck. You know, if it's part of a bigger project, you're gonna get a better pricing for mobilization. So that's what we've tried to do. So unless the board has a problem with our priorities, what my intention would be is, this year we would get the priority one projects completely done. The way we broke our priorities apart was based, not on a detailed pedestrian use study, but merely just from our knowledge, the busier streets, uh, where the most pedestrians would be is where we would start. Just seems to me to make sense to tackle the highest liability. But we would do as many of them as we can, you know, the bid for a, a price for just the truncated domes and.
On, on that Carl, uh, would that money come out of the sidewalk repair?
Right.
So we have what, si- I think it's sixty-six in there now?
Sixty-seven thousand.
Sixty-seven.
Now, some of that sixty-seven, I think was spoken for Tyler Drive and, uh, people have, those were projects, the sidewalk projects that we already had in the works. So fifty-four thousand is, um, just for the ADA repairs.
In your road plan, it's fifty-four thousand.
Right.
ADA repairs.
Right.
So that, you, so you have, so in other words, fifty-four thousand you have is from this priority one?
Well, we would do priority one and then the other thirty thousand would go into priority two.
When you say the other thirty thousand, you're talking about fifty-four minus?
Yeah, fifty-four minus the twenty-one or whatever the bid, you know, the bids for the entire tip down would be.
Just wanna make sure it's, we have it, that is clear.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions?
Just to bring this up, where, where are we with the, um, the ADA issue that we were dealing with? As far as we had talked about the sidewalk being, having it maintained in the winter, but it couldn't, there was a discussion that we had earlier about repairing or doing something to that sidewalk? Where are we with that?
Which, which one are we talking with?
Spring Street.
Tyler Drive, Spring Street? That's on the list, um, it's a rebuild, so it's down.
It's under priority three.
I mean, we have been maintaining it last winter by hand.
So we'll be able to maintain it?
We did, we did all last winter, yeah.
That was my, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So as far as this priority, uh, one, two and three as presented by Carl, that's acceptable?
I guess in general terms, it's, in my view, we're trying to tackle the highest liabilities first and it's then sorted by use.
I think it's important, at least that we have a plan in place. So I think it'd be, I think it would be, the best that we would do was be to do it in form of a motion, so it's a formal plan that we have that's been accepted by the board.
I, I agree with that. I just think that, um, I think this is a little bigger than what we have put in CIP in the past. And if we're gonna take this seriously, then I think we need to readjust our CIP numbers. You know, I, I mean, how long, or have a discussion, how long a project do you want this to be?
Oh, no, I, I, I agree, I agree. But I guess where I'm coming from for, at, right now, at, at this point in time, is so that we, at least we have a, a, the, the plan, okay? The money that's in the plan as, only money we have is what's in the budget for the sidewalk repairs for, for currently.
Right, I, I understand that. I, I guess when I look at priority one, two and three, and we're gonna tackle all of priority one this year.
Right, some.
That's what I heard, some of priority two.
Right.
Uh, I guess the next question would be, to complete priority two and complete priority three, given existing budget dollars, how long would that take?
Simple math, it'll be six years.
Right. And is that something that with regard to ADA, is that showing a good faith effort? And I'm not so sure, maybe, maybe not. And does that mean that we have to, you know, budget a little bit more money to tackle it in three years or four years? And maybe that means we shift money from roads and I, I, I don't know.
I think, I think, I think that's a two, that's two questions. I think that's two separate issues.
Yeah.
The issue that I'm trying to deal with right now is the plan.
Yes, I'm fine with it.
And the only thing with the plan is the sixty-seven thousand that we currently have in the budget. The rest of it is a different issue because then it's, is that, is the six-year plan meet, or, 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 does that meet their requirements?
Right, that's my question.
And that, that's a second issue that we can, we can deal with.
And my, my comment on that is, uh, this, this is a wonderful starting point for justifying the work in the CIP. And, uh, it's up at that point how aggressive they would wanna be to make it a four-year plan or a six-year plan.
Well, it's not, I'm sorry, Nick was first.
Well, I guess my, my only issue is, um, I, I understand priority one, because we wanna make sure we have the, the, the tip downs and you have to put the dome in. Priority two versus priority three. My understanding with ADA, unless you're redoing a road, you're not required to retrofit a tip down with the truncated dome plates. So you say that priority two is a higher liability for us than priority three. I'm not quite sure, I, I, I'm willing to wait until all of priority two is done before priority. I think there are some sidewalks in priority three that may need to be done prior to getting truncated dome plates on every tip down. Because we're not required to do that until we redo that road.
Right.
Because if there are already existing tip downs and they're, or pre-existing tip downs, we're not required to go out right now and put those plates. So I, I don't wanna say, and I'm okay with doing mostly priority two, but I don't wanna say, yes, I'm voting for a road pla- or a sidewalk plan, that until we're done with priority two, we're not doing any priority.
And I, I don't think, I don't think that's what it is.
That's fine, as long as we're.
No, no, I think what it is, is these sidewalks, I think what I, what I'm hearing is that these sidewalks that are in priority three, as, they, they can be addressed before priority two. Because some of these will be addressed if it's a road or if it's a sp- a particular issue to get, to get done. It's not, wh- when, when you're looking at it, from the perspective of, it's easier to install the, the trunk, uh, the dome plates than it is to go out and rebuild the sidewalk.
And I understand.
As far as that is concerned, but these, that does not stop a sidewalk. That does not mean that no sidewalks are gonna get done until priority two.
As long as that's clear, because I don't want next year, if we bring up a sidewalk repair, someone saying, well, we have a plan and until we're done with two, we can't move on to three.
No.
As long as it's open, I'm fine with that, okay?
For, and for example, on this year's road plan we just approved, there are, uh, three sidewalks that are outside the ADA priority one. Or, you know, excuse me, the priority one, priority two. So that shows that we're, we're dipping down into.
Both other, two and three.
Right. I, I guess the way that I look at that is.
I'm sure we'll continue that.
Sidewalks are addressed there, there's three sidewalks that are priority three, okay? Out of that, we have sixty-seven, we have sixty-seven thousand dollars. Obviously, we're not gonna be doing, uh, sidewalk, rebuilding sidewalks for that kinda money. So that kind, that other money will be spread, that, that's going to priority one. And then we use them.
One quick question?
Sure.
Is there, we've talked about this for several years, we have a tip down across the street that's no longer used as a crosswalk. Is there any chance of that getting removed?
Yes. Yeah.
This year?
Yeah, we can add, we can do, do that as part of those issues. Because we're gonna have to, when we do tip downs, we're gonna have to lower, you know, we're gonna have to, have the curb guys here lowering so they can raise those at the same time.
Right here, you're referring to the, uh, Main Street.
Main Street, yes.
Across the street.
Okay, so can we have a motion on this?
Motion to, uh, accept the, uh, two thousand and ten sidewalk management plan as presented by the Director of DPW.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
I just say, also, I just think we need to be mindful of how, what leeway do we have with ADA compliance? And what's our timeframe? Because if we have six years, then fine, I don't have a problem with that. If we don't have six years, if it's something where the regulators or whoever's in charge of, you know, that says, you know what? You need to speed it up a little bit, we, you know, but if, if we're showing good faith effort and we're okay with that, then.
I think, I think it's as represented by Slough and Cassino, when you're working on a sidewalk or, or doing any major improvements, you're supposed to comply with ADA.
Uh, well, let's, why don't we leave it this way? Since Carl presents his things through CIP and this is obviously gonna, we're gonna have, be going through CIP, we'll probably have some discussion with him.
Right, but I guess where I'm trying to go with this Phil is that if, if that, if what Sue said is the case and times are tou- are tough in terms of, or we have a limited amount of funds, if, if six years is acceptable, then good, let's stick with it. I mean, I don't, I don't wanna stick more money at it if, if it's not something that presents, does not present a liability to the town.
Uh, no, I, I understand what you're saying. What I was gonna say is, since Carl makes those presentations and that comes in Carl's department, it's, I think it's, it's appropriate to leave that up to Carl and Sue to determine as he goes through the CIP process, the timeframe. I mean, if there's an issue and says, you know, we really need to do this because of, uh, something and he's got a statute that says that we need to do this, or he's got some directive from some state agency presented with that and goes through, goes through the, the budget process.
Good.
She is fit to be very, very talented. We just got an interest, we just want to, they supplied us with a result, but it'll be interesting to see what we get. One item?
Go ahead.
Uh, seven eight, roundabout change order?
Yeah, we don't have that.
We don't have it, okay. Next week.
I was hoping.
So the only thing we have with used on public, right?
Right.
What's that?
Well, we have a lot of items.
No, I know that, but I'm saying as far as, as with Carl.
With Carl, yeah.
Okay? That's what I'm trying to tell you. I don't know if we get involved in something else, he's gone.
Stay around, Carl.
All right, we didn't get to the minutes because, uh, Chairman Gross was not here.
Motion to accept.
Seconded. Lot of pressure, okay?
Well, we were, we were informed that most of the minutes were about you, so we wanted to wait.
No, I thought the comment was that he said most of it.
Three quarters of it was yours.
No, you read it while you were running.
Yeah. It's tiring reading all that.
So is there any discussion on the minutes? All? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous and I think that covers everything.
No, we put off the draft and serve for the property tax bill and the survey.
That's right, the survey on that.
Five D and five E.
Five D.
Yeah, all the stuff that I, uh, had fingers in.
Yeah.
You don't say it, Sue doesn't have to write it.
I guess with regard to the, the, the notice with the tax bill, um, it's, it's a double-edged sword. I, I think it's, I think it, we should be some, somewhat obligated to let people know that they're gonna see a, a pretty substantial increase so they can plan financially. So that's one, that's one part of it. The other part of it is, is, is why? You know, why did it? You know, what were the factors that went into it? Or maybe show, you know, some of the history, uh, and I know Sue, you had some discussions with, uh, this Superintendent of Schools. But just, you know, when, when you look at even, say, the last three years, you can, you know, at least you see it went total of twenty-four seventy in two thousand and seven, twenty-two sixty-nine in two thousand and eight. Two thousand and nine it was twenty-one sixty-seven and now we know that it's gonna go up to, um, was it twenty-three, almost twenty-four dollars, right?
Yeah, it's going up three dollars and thirty-five cents.
Thirty cents, right.
I just wanna point out, if we're gonna put two thousand and eight in there though.
There's a revalue, right. Was it two thousand and eight or was it two thousand and seven?
Two thousand and eight, that's why the rate went down.
Right, it was done till seven, but it kicked in on eight.
Yep.
You know, there, there's, there's two, two things that, uh, I had, uh, concern about. Number one, we only have control over one portion, the first line on here, which is the town side. When we got down to the county, the only place that we have on this entire form, uh, is under two-ten estimated is the word unknown. We have absolutely no control over.
Do we know that, that we can find that out?
Actually, that just came in today, so I.
Oh, it did?
I'll be able to plug a number, it's a public hearing, but what they estimate, it's an estimate anyway.
All right, but I guess, I guess the only, what, what, one fear that I have on this, I mean, we put something out, as, we put something like this out, okay? And then who knows what happens, okay? Cause we really don't know until the tax rates are set, to be honest with you. I mean, you know, these, this, this is approximation. This is what we, you know, we, we anticipate. This is what we, you know, we, we anticipate. Because we're plugging numbers in to come up with, with something. And I guess I just have a concern that if something is different than what we have down on here, or something happens with the county, and the bottom line number changes, but this is in a tax bill that goes out of town hall, that.
Oh, is this any different than the voter's guide? I mean, in March, before March, we put in what estimated increases in people's taxes are going to be before they even vote.
I guess, I guess, though, my point, the point I'm trying to make is, I, I think there's nowhere on here, okay, there's nowhere in here, just something brief, that these are estimates, and these are the best estimates that we have.
And, and it's also, we are writing to make you aware of this estimated increase. If we want to go and highlight the word estimated increase, you know, and put it in, and add another sentence saying, you know.
No, I, I understand estimated is in there, but the estimated is based on the information, the best available information that we have at the moment.
Fine, I, I mean, I, I guess the first issue is, is one, should we alert taxpayers as to the fact that they're going to have to dole out additional funds above and beyond what they've probably done in the past?
Second bill.
Right, and I, I think that is, I think that's something that we should do. Um, that's just my opinion. Now, maybe we need to take a vote on that to see if it, because if there's not enough support to do that, then this is all moot.
I'd like to do this. Um, I, I would prefer something reasonable to be replaced, the word unknown for the county.
Then we may have that.
Because up, up above, we do state three point thirty-five. And by default, that meant that the county was one dollar and eighteen cents. So either you put one eighteen there and you sum it up to twenty-five dollars and two cents, or you, or if Sue, you know a better figure than one eighteen, you could put that in there. So that's my first comment. Second, I like Selectman's, Clavance's comments, that if we, if we can do better to imply this is estimated. But, uh, so that, that's the only thing I would add to this. The important point is to, as the paragraphs say, to be prepared in November. Perhaps instead of saying be prepared in November, something like that, perhaps we need to put, do with something, that, that, we're, we're trying to, trying to make you aware of it. I mean, just, just the way that it's presented needs to be, uh, clarified, I believe.
Can someone call and get an estimate of what their December taxes would be?
Talk about the county?
No, if, if a tax, you know, if a, if a resident called town hall, could they?
We typically don't give that out. We tell them what the vote at town meeting result, would result in, if there was estimates.
Just, just so we're aware, I mean, the word estimated was used four times in this letter.
Yes, a circle of four times.
And there's also a phrase that said, this estimated tax rate, which can change if the estimated revenues change in any way, I mean, probably the change, you know, tweak that, that sentence a bit, and then in the chart it says estimated. So maybe if we want to go and bold the word estimated, or underline it so for, for effect, but clearly, I think, and, and if it was bolded, if it was underlined, I think you'd have to be falling asleep at the switch, not to, not to, not to know that that word was highlighted three or four times, so, so. And again, the most important thing for, for people here is that they're not caught short come December time, that they're going to, you know, or November, December, when they have to pay their bill, and now they're looking at an additional, you know, eight hundred dollars, potentially more out of their pocket, you know?
If, if, if that's the purpose, I see this being confusing to most people. I like the part that says, you know, your est- the estimated taxes are going to go up. But maybe just a very simple paragraph that says, to calculate what your taxes may increase, take the figure off your, you know, your, your, your assessed value, divide it by this, multiply it by this, and that gives you your estimate, something very simple.
Give them a formula?
Yeah, but all, all of this apportionment and
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Someone looks at that and they're like, what does that mean?
And, and, and you know what? Somebody looks at something like this, they, they see part of it, and they're going to put it down.
And then. If I, if I.
You would, you would replace the second paragraph
Yeah.
with a method that they can calculate it.
Something very simple, so everybody could plug numbers in and kind of get an estimate of what their December.
Even link it to the website, if you want, you can check out where your assessed value is, you multiply it by, by this, and you're done. You're going to, this, this is what your tax bill is. That's really what it is, folks.
And that's why we're doing what we're setting out to do.
So do you want to take out the apportionment chart, or does that add anything to it, having the history, or?
I think the history is important, but I don't know, it's my.
Put that on the website.
I'm going to ask the dumb questions, since I'm the new guy, and the rest of them, Sue, already know the answer. Um, we're in two thousand ten. The April bill goes out collecting, well, collecting money for two thousand ten. Why isn't the April rate effective with the amount of money we need to collect?
We don't set the tax rate until October, because you have an opportunity to reexamine your revenue stream. That would affect your tax rate. But you don't set the.
But we, we're, uh, is it mandatory, we stay with the previous year's rate?
Yeah, some towns still just do an annual billing, and so they just deal with the new rate.
We have some understanding of the revenue at this point in time. I mean, we'll have more perfect clarity in the October.
All evaluations, your M S one, um, not your M S one, yeah, is, the evaluation of the town is due September first. So any new construction that goes on in, in the summertime, uh, even though it's April first, is the property tax year, you know, they do updates, so that all is due September first, as, as well as revenue updates.
There could be other residents that are saying this, if you're expecting such a large increase, why don't you start taxing us now? Rather than wait till November?
We can't, we can't, till we, till D R A sets a tax rate.
So, fine, that's part of the public information we just discussed.
And that, and you're not the only one. Um, people wonder that all the time. Why do we have half, the first half of the tax rate set on the previous year and the last half on the new?
Thank you for clarifying.
But I sent, when I sent this to Sue, um, you know, one of the things that, and I, and I, again, I don't know how to articulate it, and I, I don't think it's by any stretch an excuse for, um, the tax bill. But I looked at my own tax bills over the last five or six years, and the big, one of the big issues, the why it is such a big jump this year is because we saw a decrease the year before, and not only did we see a decrease, but it was a decrease when what was estimated, by the way, that particular year was a dollar increase. So, um, just to give some rough numbers, again, using my own examples. Uh, few, I think it was probably around two thousand five or two thousand six, my bill would say six thousand, then it went to sixty-two hundred, then it went up to sixty-five hundred. It was supposed to go to sixty-seven hundred or sixty-eight hundred, but it went down to sixty-two hundred. That was that shift that I was talking about. Now it's going to go up probably to seven thousand or seventy-one hundred. So to the, when you, if you, if you look at it from, oh, you know, oh nine to two thousand and ten, that's, that's an eight or nine hundred dollar difference, which is exactly the example you gave there. But without any explanation, it's like, holy cow, Batman. But when you do look at, at the history, it's not as, it's still bad, because it's still going up, but it's, it's not, you're just not seeing that bam, you know, the one that's punchy right in the face. And that's what I was trying to somehow, you know, articulate, is that when we did our Mar- our, our March two thousand and nine vote, the voters voted for, I think it was about a dollar increase in their tax bill. What they ended up getting was a decrease.
Dollar-two decrease.
A dollar-two decrease. And that, and so now, you're, then you're looking at, um, another increase, but it's exacerbated uh, because you had that decrease. And I don't know how to really explain that to people. It is what it is. I mean, um, most of that came from the school side, uh, with unanticipated revenues from the stimulus package, but that's the reason, whether, whether or not we care to articulate the reason.
Well, you know, the only thing is, is, once you start getting into that stuff and you start putting these numbers in here, what about the equalizer rate? Equalizer's not in here. And as you start going, you go to a different year, and you have a reassessment, and you go to that prior year before the reassessment, you have a big difference in your equalizer, and the average person's going to look at.
And I'm not, and I, and that's, and that's why, when I, when we look at our own bills, barring any, you know, major home improvement or rent of, you know, where your, your house would, would, would be assessed, uh, at a higher rate, to the average person, they're seeing what, what they're paying. It's hard to do it, because you're right, we got reevaluated, uh, in two thousand, I think, seven or two thousand.
And you have major difference in the equalizer between those years, because that's why you did the reval.
But that gets shared amongst everybody, for the most part, residential.
To calculate, you calculate your taxes. You can't just use the tax rate, you got to use the equalizer factor.
What's the equalizer factor? You're losing me.
You, they can go online and see the equalized tax rate for the town of Goffstown.
I, I understand, I understand what that is, that's, that's for all the different communities in the state, so if I had to say, wow, our tax rate is twenty-one sixty-seven and Bedford's is nineteen.
But you can't go by it, you got to look at the equalizer, you got different equalizers in the town.
And I understand that, I'm just looking at my own town. My own town.
Town has its own equalizer.
No, 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 but my town is, yeah, but that's, that's to judge town by town across the state.
Correct.
Uh, because they have, they're, you're working from a myriad of different factors, uh, commercial tax base, et cetera. But I'm looking at my own bill. My own bill was X amount in, in this year, and, and that, and then it was a little bit, two hundred bucks more the year after, three hundred bucks the year after that. It was supposed to go up another three hundred, but it went down five hundred, and now it's going up eight hundred. That's just me. I'm sure we're all in this, probably all in the same boat here, right?
He's not, you're not trying to, he's not trying to compare it from town to town, just year to year, within your own, within your own.
My story, is my story different than anybody else's? I'm sure we all had the same experience, because our, we were supposed to see a dollar increase and we had a dollar decrease. So depending upon how much your house is, that, it could be a fairly large swing. Now, whether we want to put this in a letter, I, it, it's all up to you guys. I, I just. This is, this just goes back to the whole communication thing.
I think the letter's good. I like the letter. When I look at the numbers, though, the only thing I'm concerned about will generate phone calls. And that's the only thing I see about that. I understand what you're trying to say, that, hey, by the way, you know, there was a change the year before, now you're paying on that double N. I understand exactly the, the message, but I think it's going to generate phone calls. Maybe that's just me, and, and I'm not sure if that's something we want to go down to.
And is it bad to generate phone calls and let people, if they have a question? I mean, I know that we don't inundate the system here, but if people are educated, is it a bad thing as to what's going on?
That means you need to produce a word track and who's going to handle the call.
Well, the tax collector would get this call.
And the tax collector's going to get the calls anyway. That's the point.
Well, if you don't put this in, if you don't put some kind of notice out, they'll get calls.
You know what, if this is going to go out, we need to let the tax collector know, and we need to have.
Hi, Bernie.
What we don't want, what we don't want is somebody calling up with a question, getting one person, getting one answer, somebody else calling up, getting somebody else, and getting the same answer maybe in a different explanation, and.
The assessor's seen this, and the tax collector's seen this. Uh, one comment by the assessor was, he wouldn't put the bottom part in, the estimated tax rate. He wouldn't be that specific. Because when it comes in a little different, people are going to say, hey, wait a minute.
I thought we'd put his phone number underneath this.
If we had a compromise, could we just have the letter served, just the purpose we wanted, is to get people prepared for their December bill? Put something in the letter, if they want a detailed breakdown of all of this, see the website.
See the website.
And have a page on our website that can have all of the calculations and.
And you can put in even examples. An average home in two thousand, a home, and you can pick an address. You know, this is, you can, you know what I'm saying, like what I did with my own bill, and say, here is the progression of the taxes.
Have a, have a timeline, another page that's a timeline of our last big years.
You know what else you can add on that? You can add maybe ten frequently asked questions.
Yeah, that's, that's perfect. Because it's a place where they can refer themselves to and if they, to get more information.
And you can change that as, if there's a question that keeps coming up that we didn't anticipate, add it, add it, add it. So, in, in summary, uh, taking out paragraph two, taking out the.
And the chart.
The chart, and adding a sentence, uh, reverend the website.
Oh, yeah.
Please, build, build the website very quickly.
We're on that before we track.
When these notices go out.
Before we track, that means we're down to, we're busting Carl's chops.
The day after this notice goes out, you're going to have five thousand.
We'll see this check on Friday.
Poor Carl over there.
And maybe Neil can even just put a little calculator in there.
Yeah.
Where you can put your assessed value, you know, a little blank, they do it all, so you put a little, have a little blank, you put in your assessed value of your house, and it gives you your estimated.
Oh, that's an X O, it's an X O with the, it's an X O with the formula. I, no, I, I agree with them totally, you just want to put the number in. I agree with you.
And it does all that calculation in the background and somebody can get there.
You were talking about keeping it simple, that makes it real simple.
You want, uh. Is that a motion?
Yeah.
That would be part of that.
Okay.
Oh, let's see, is it what's.
Yeah, that, that'll work.
I like it when it's a motion, though.
Then make a motion, hey, if you make a motion, I'll accept as long as it's seconded.
At least then, it's official.
Is, so that's a motion?
Uh, well, uh, Selectman Pierce started to make one, but do you want me to do it? Uh, to proceed with the draft letter, uh, absent the second paragraph and the chart.
And the reference to the chart?
Making reference, right.
No, only the first.
We're taking out.
First and third paragraph.
First and third paragraph. The second and four, uh, the second paragraph and the chart are being eliminated.
No, the, the fourth, the fourth paragraph, and sincerely.
The motion is, too.
Hold on, before.
Sorry, you got.
It's my understanding, again, I'll recap it. First paragraph was fine, we're removing the second paragraph. The third paragraph is remaining.
Correct.
The se- the next one, we hope this notice helps to prepare you, that would stay.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, you want, you want to keep that one? Oh, that's okay, I, yeah.
The chart goes, there's also going to be the addition of, for, uh, for more questions, please feel free to go to our town's website. And on the town's website, there will be frequently asked questions, and then examples with a financial, a calculator for you to calculate your bill.
And a timeline.
And a timeline.
Of the past.
Is there a second on that one, right?
Yes.
I'll second that summary.
He's busting my chops, Phil, over here. I'm very tired, it was a very long day.
Me? I'm only running the meeting, these guys are saying everything.
Oh, God.
Any other questions? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, and has the next, oh, yeah.
Bring us a draft next Monday?
You see what you started? And they waited for you. We could have had this all done.
Oh, I, I appreciate that. Okay, so the survey, I'm the only one who responded, Sue?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
No, there was a re- there was a reason, there was a reason, because we anticipated this to be a questionnaire about ours.
Our, yeah.
And it's not.
Well, Sue sent out survey questions from I C M A.
I know, I have the feeling.
Right now, right, so when I looked through that.
He liked number eleven.
I just liked number eleven. I thought number eleven was just, it just took the pulse of a lot of our town departments, uh, some of the bigger departments, it took a few more vital signs.
But that's not us.
What? I understand that.
And that was the point of ours, that's why we didn't respond, and we said, we'll discuss it, because I'd come in and looked at it, and I said, not what I was expecting, so. I guess the question would be, are we, are we expanding this out or just keeping it to the board, the survey?
Frankly, I, this is just my own opinion, um, I don't hold myself in that higher regard. Um, I think that, I think the citizens really care more about, is the garbage being picked up, is the recycling being picked up? Um, are they, are they like the police services, the fire services, ambulance, et cetera? And I think I am number eighty on that priority list personally, but I think if I wanted to know how we're doing, I think I could, and I think I even put one in there, you know, for the selectmen or the town clerk. Um, all this is doing is just, you know, how would you rate it? And, and if there are some departments that are not rated favorably, then maybe we want to do another, a more in-depth one. And we, and I think we should do in-depth ones, but I just, I just wanted to, after I saw the I C M A, uh, template, I'm like, wow, this is pretty good. This gives you twenty questions, it gives you a pretty good, you know, vital signs as to how the town is doing overall. And if there are some concerns, then maybe, uh, you know, that particular department or entity would say, hey, I got to do something, you know? I'm not viewed upon too favorably in the community. Or maybe I'm doing a great job, I don't know. Any, any discussion on this, do you, do you feel that, that that perhaps is-
It was just a change from what we had discussed at the time.
I thought that before, that's decided with the-
That was why I, I held word, my thought.
No, well, I guess the question I'm asking, was his argument strong enough to convince you?
He's not a very convincing guy, no, I'm just joking. I'll, I'll break the deadlock here, I-
I'm only running the meeting, I told you!
I just, I just took a light moment, Dan.
I get busted when I run the meeting, I get busted when I don't, it's okay, it's me.
What's the timeframe for this?
Well-
I don't think we should do it, right, you mentioned the thing, don't do it with this tax bill, and that was right.
No, yeah.
Well, that was my question.
I, going back to what we-
And, and we don't have a budget for it, so I guess we are gonna do it on the website.
You know, and I have no preference which way we go, or sensation, we don't have a strong preference, but part of the process, I think, we spoke last week, and what Nick brought up, I think, was the idea of, of the board going first, that, that I think there was some apprehension probably from the department, other departments saying that, oh, no, worried about, about the survey. So thus, us going first was going the idea of, um, yeah, there's gonna be criticisms, they're not, there probably won't be highly favorable surveys for this. And, but part of that is that-
There might be.
And, or, or it might or might not, we don't know. But, but part of that process that, is the, is the survey is to look at it and see what areas you can improve upon, which areas that your perception is right or wrong, and, and the reason, I think, and, and I, maybe I shouldn't speak for Nick, but I think it was the idea of, hey, we'll go there and go first, just, just be, for the idea of, there was apprehension out there from the department. And, but I have, you know, if you wanna, if you wanna blend it in a little more, I guess I could work with that also.
Well, uh, and quite honestly, this one slipped off my radar scope, so, uh, I, I do owe this board a serious review of this, uh, sample survey, and, uh, a look at your recommendations, Selectman Gross, and I'll, I'll answer this time, so, uh-
We'll bring it up next week.
Keep it, keep it on the agenda for next week.
What we're gonna try to do then is, we'll try to roll it all into one simple survey, is that where we're going?
If we're going a blended one, is that's what we're talking about here, why don't we just talk, how many questions do we want in the survey, first of all? Just, just make a number.
Just so everyone is clear, the ICMA was a really, really long survey.
Right.
I mean, really long. And, um, what I liked about this question number eleven is, again, it just gave you a snapshot of the town, and that was that. Then, you could still use the ICMA survey questions, let's just say if you wanted to focus in on DPW. There's a myriad of questions on DPW, that if you wanted to, in six months from now, you could do a survey specific to DPW. Secondly, I don't, I don't, I don't know, maybe I'm off on the apprehension piece, but Police Department does this thing every other year. The Parks and Rec Commission and the Parks and Rec Director just did one last year. I don't think, I think the library is constantly getting feedback as to how they do, and the trustees, so I don't think that there's a ton of apprehension. But I, I, I respect the fact that we should be out there with them, and I think that's why there's a question for us.
Okay, but I guess one thing, though, I mean, when you mentioned PD, okay, PD has, I'm not sure the number, maybe six hundred, they, they have twelve hundred, they have a, a certain amount of-
Of surveys they do, sample.
Samples that they do.
Yeah.
Within a certain timeframe, and they have a, a methodology of how they randomly select, okay? So, if we're going to, uh, do something, is it, do we want to try to see if we can do it along that line? I mean, we may not be able to do it with the same, uh, you know, the same way PD does, because they may not be able to handle us, but we may need to look at something similar that way, or, or are we going to have these available on the, like, website? People can answer them, I mean, we, we need, of, of, of how this is gonna be. Would, uh, I'm unfamiliar with how the Police Department does it, but I'm assuming it's something that they may send postcards to-
Six hundred telephone calls, it's everything, it's a lot, it's, they do, they do different methods, yeah.
But if it's, uh, a postcard with a, a sign on, password to a website-
Different, because they, they, they do telephone ones to capture people who, yeah, who don't, um, who may not have email address, and I think they do-
What, what, what if we did this? I mean, did anybody have any specific ideas, or ways that they thought that this should be done?
I, I was leading in that direction, um, postcard or a letter, saying, uh, you've been selected randomly for a survey, and we would encourage you to do it over the internet, following site, and here's a password, and, uh, that only you have been given. But if you're unable to do that, maybe it's available at the town hall or a library. And that way, it's what was mentioned, that it's a controlled survey.
If, if that's the case, I think the ICMA survey is fine, I would use that survey.
The whole thing?
An individual made, I mean, it's five pages, somebody may take it all, some may take questions, but I, I think all of these questions, for the most part, you may, maybe one or two here.
Customize it to, to our services.
Um, but for the most part, it's a very comprehensive survey, that, I mean, if we're gonna do it, why would we, why would we limit? We're doing it online, most, I bet you most people would sit and take this.
Yeah, I, I guess my, you know, ask everyone's a thought process, my thought process was that this would be something that would be online, that we could advertise it, we can direct people to go on to our website, there'd be a link to our website, like a Survey Monkey, very quick, open it up, maybe, again, one, um, you know, again, you cannot take it, usually it recognizes an IP, and you can do multiple, and it's not, uh, I'm sure it's not gonna be the most statistically, you know, perfect, uh, survey, but it gives us a snapshot, and then from there, department heads can work with it, we can look at it and say, you know what? Let's do a more exacting one, with a, with a proper sampling for a different department that uses the ICMA, um, questions, which I thought were very good, but just too long.
So, under your scheme, it could be a public announcement?
Yes.
Newspaper?
Newspaper, anywhere.
Welcoming.
Right, we could be, we could put slides on GTV, you can put them in the public library at different, you know?
Can, can, I had to jump back with Nick, though, can we, and that, that's where I started, can we just get to the size and scope of the survey before we figure out mediums? I mean, that's just me, I, I thought that the one that we, this last one with the email was just too- I'm not sure what I would get out of it. You know, I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't specific enough, it was very bland, it was very general, you know?
What are you talking about?
Number eleven, question eleven. On the ICMA survey?
Yes.
You cut, you-
Right.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, okay, maybe I misunderstood, I thought, when you were looking at this, you were trying to, I thought it was very general.
Yeah.
And, well, I'll, I'll just pass, I'm, I'm kinda with Nick, though, I'd like to see the whole thing. The whole survey. Be done.
Which is, encompasses more than just these, these, well, this is only, this one here, which is, is only number eleven, you have ten others?
By the way, it's number eleven, but it's, it's, I pared down half the questions from number eleven, just so you know. We don't have an animal control officer, so, let's not ask that question.
Well, I mean, you have to take care of some things, but-
I mean, yes and no, when you say that, but number eleven is basically just a list of things, and one, two, three, four, five.
Right.
So, I mean, it, it's not something that really is gonna take excellent, good, fair, poor, don't know, police service, fire service, ambulance, crime prevention, fire prevention, municipal courts, traffic enforcement, some of these things may not apply, bus or transit services, we wouldn't have, recycling, yard waste pickups, or, somebody could go through this in less than two minutes. One, two, three, four, five, it's, it's not asking for a comment, it's not asking for an opinion.
But that's just question eleven, though.
But most of them are like that. And, and I guess I just, you, you go the other extreme, where people just get tired of going online and taking surveys, and if you're gonna go through the trouble of sampling and taking a survey-
Get it once.
Get the information you want, versus go out and ask five questions about how they think things are in general. And the next time, go out and ask twenty questions on what they think of DPW, and then twenty questions on the Fire Department. Get it out there and get it done, I think most people will sit and conscientiously take a survey.
We'll find out, I guess. I'm fine with that, I'd, I'd rather do something as opposed to nothing. I'd rather not beat this thing, and, I'm not insulted by it. I just wanted, I, I just want to get the public to weigh in on how they feel about their services, for a variety of reasons. I mean, we just talked about this whole thing about a tax rate, okay? And we go in with assumptions that people value their services, and I think, I just, I'm looking for validity, is this true, is this not true?
Well, I, I guess, so, if, if that's the case, let me just ask this question. When you ask about those services, would you want to ask a question more like, to rate the curbside recycling?
In a way you'd do, though. Because I think it says, it, it, on, on that question number eleven, that we're talking about, it says, please rate the quality of each of the following services, and it'll say, snow removal, sidewalk maintenance, garbage collection, recycling, and you can put excellent, good, fair, poor, or you don't know. I think it does that.
Okay.
I, okay, and going back to, we're going back to that survey, questions one and two were very good, because those are questions regarding the quality of, of life within, within, within the town. In other words, it's a good place to live, good place to retire, work, bus travel, et cetera. And I think there, those, uh, when you look at those, and then you start weighing some of the other pieces with, that we spoke in the other, the other, it gives a, it gives a more rounded picture.
I'm fine with it, I'm fine.
But, uh, I, either way, I'm just, I think it's, you're right, that we have to do something.
So I think we have, probably have to disable this, I mean, go ahead with it, but it's gonna take some time to get this survey into like a web, needs to, needs to be worked format or something.
And I also wanna make sure there's no copyright infringement here.
Okay, alright. So, we're good then? Anything else for public? Motion to go under non-public? So moved. Under, um-
D?
D, land. Your second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes. There is a copy right now, so.
There is?